Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, February 22, 2022 Board Meeting. At this time, we will report our, I mean, go into closed session and if the clerk can read off the three items.
Item one pursuant to government code 54956.9b1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Barr versus County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court, case number 18CV42976. Item two pursuant to government code 54657b1, public employee performance evaluation, title county counsel. Item three pursuant to government code 54657b1, public employee performance evaluation, title county administrative officer.
Thank you, and with that, we'll close and go into closed session. We'll see the nine.
There's no public comments.
Oh, yeah. No, any public comment online?
There's no online public comment.
And I don't see anyone in the room. Okay, thank you. Welcome back to the Tuesday, February 22, 2022 Board Meeting. At this time, we will reconvene to closed session after the regular agenda, and at this time, could you please stand for the badge?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, to the right of the United States of America, in two thirds of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, is there any staff announcement?
There's no staff announcements.
Next on the agenda is recognition and acknowledgement. We have a proclamation.
Proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors proclaimed the month of February 2022 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Calaveras County.
Before we get started, is there any public comment? Hi, good morning.
Good morning. My name's Carolyn Steimes. I'm the president of the California Grand Jury Association Chapter, the Motherlode Chapter here. This is our vice president, Brendan McHenry. May I speak a little bit about the grand jury and the Motherlode Chapter?
Yes.
Okay. The civil grand jury is an investigating body created for the protection of society and enforcement of its law. This is based on the Fifth Amendment. Check it out. Most don't realize that. It is a watchdog responsibility to examine county and city government. Sometimes that can include special districts, and it's to ensure their duties are carried out lawfully. Grand jurors are 19 sworn officers of the Superior Court. However, they work as an independent body striving to ensure that the best interest of all Calaveras County residents are being served by their government bodies. The selection is very much an honor to be on the grand jury. More information can be found on the grand jury, and the citizen complaint form can also be found on the website. The website is www.grandjury@calaverasgov.us. To be a member of the California Grand Jury Association, Motherlode Chapter, or any chapter, you only need to have served one term on a civil grand jury. The chapter supports and is a resource for the impane Amador, Calaveras, and Tuolumne Counties. It is the only tri-city chapter in the association. We support the presiding judges in each county. Additionally, we promote county awareness and greater understanding about local government. We're an oversight and reporting powers for the government responsibility. And more information can be found on the CGJA website, www.cgja.org. We want to thank you for your time, and again, check out the websites. Thank you for the proclamation and the awareness for the grand jury. Oh, we have pamphlets, too, that we can pass out for each of you.
Can you get those?
Thank you.
Yes. Great.
Yes, I'm sorry. I just, I'm new to this format. I saw a note that the presenter wanted me to speak. So I didn't really have a comment, except that it's nice to be here, and I look forward to being part of this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, no other comments on the proclamation? I will read it. Whereas every year in each of California's 58 counties, 19 ordinary citizens take an oath to voluntarily serve a term of one year as grand jurors. And whereas the grand jury system was brought to the United States for the colonists, and the first grand jury in America was implemented in 1635. Whereas Calaveras County, one of the original 27 counties of the state, was organized at the 1849-1850 session of the California State Legislature. Whereas the grand jury is truly an independent investigative body operational separate from the entities and officials they investigate, and who are officers of the court under the guidance of the Calaveras County Superior Court Presiding Judge. Whereas certain responsibilities of the grand jury are mandated by state law, and the grand jury has jurisdictional right to investigate city and county departments, school districts, and special districts. Whereas the grand jury is composed of 19 citizens who represent the citizens of the county and making recommendations for improvement to our local government. Whereas the grand jury decides what areas of local government they are going to investigate or review during the year. One of the most important functions of the grand jury is to review the operations of officers, departments, and agencies of local government and special district. Whereas the grand jury receives and reviews complaints from citizens within the county. Whereas the grand jury investigates processes, may or may not result in reports. Those fact-finding reports identify specific problems and provide specific recommendations for governmental improvement and/or identified comments. Whereas the grand jury is recognized for their dedicated service and their dedicated time volunteering to make Calaveras County government and special district entity more efficient for the best interest of the community. And with that, I will open a motion from the board, or any comment. Supervisor, stop it.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, today hereby designate the month of February 2022 to be declared civilian civil grand jury month in Calaveras County, and encourage citizens to participate in the grand jury process.
It's an integral part of our constitutional process. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I spent four years in the grand jury in Calaveras.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today.
You ladies have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming today.
You ladies have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
That's why I duck when the picture could be get.
Next is general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during the public comment period. Is there any public comment online?
There's no online public comment.
Okay, and she none in the room. We'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be between a non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff, member, or interested party may request the removal of an item on consent for later discussion. Is there any board member that wishes to pull?
Item number 12, Madam Chair.
Okay. Are there any other board members? Is there any public comment, or public member that wishes to pull an item from consent?
There's no online request.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, not including item number 12?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the remainder.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vice Chair Topfennelly.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This item has to do with wagon trail project, and there's an addendum seeking $162,000 increases of current contract. However, if you go to page 341 of our agenda packet, 340 and 341, it has the chart of the Second Amendment, which was total of $404,509.74, which actually that amendment just changed money around to the original contract. It also has on that chart the fee change, and then the Third Amendment to it. There's a math error here, which I've pointed out twice. If you, if you take the 572,188.23, and you subtract the 404,509.74, you should come up with 162,678.49, which it shows us the change, but actually, it comes out to 167, 678.49. And the reason for that is if you look from the bottom up to Mayor's nave, Meyer's nave, it shows in the first column 111,437.89, and then zero, zero, no change, but to the right hand of that, it shows 116,437.89 cents. That's the $5,000 error. And I want to clarify whether this is actually 167, we're agreeing on, or is it 162, and that should remain 111,437, or is it going to increase to 116? And I talked to Robert about it just a few minutes ago, and he was gonna, I told him I was pulling this item.
Mr. Pakindor?
Thank you. Supervisor Topfennelly is correct. Staff prepared this exhibit B for the contract, and there is a $5,000 amount that's missing from that column. The correct number is, as Supervisor Topfennelly says, for the total is 167,678.49. The final contract amount of 572,188.23 is correct, and that's reflected in the cover sheets and all the other sheets. It's the math leading up to that number that there was an amount missing. So staff has prepared an updated sheet. It's noted as page 10 of 10 on the lower right-hand corner, and we'll get that up to the clerk here in a second, or as soon as we can, but we have the updated sheet already in our hands.
Okay, so we can move this item with that change to 167,678, and you will send out a revised email showing that amount, so as correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
With that, unless you have any public comment?
I was gonna do public comment, just to cover, any public comment? Okay.
I will move this item with the change to 167,678.49.
I'll provide a second. Thank you, Mr. Topfennelly, for your diligence.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. With that, we will move on to regular agenda, 25. Yeah, you can. Can you read agenda item number 25? Okay.
Item 25, action item, administrative office provide direction to staff regarding recommendations for congressionally-directed spending requests.
Okay, with that, turn it over to Ms. Von Latta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the Board, Krista Von Latta from the Administrative Office. With us, we have today Mia O'Connell from O'Connell and Dempsey, our federal advocate, to discuss with us potential earmark, or congressionally-directed spending requests to your consideration. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. McConnell. Good morning, Mia.
Good morning. How are you, Krista?
Good, thanks.
Thank you. Good. Thank you so much for this opportunity. It's great to see everyone today. We're here, as Krista said, to really talk about the draft congressionally-directed spending requests for federal fiscal year '23, for the appropriations process, congressionally-directed spending, as otherwise known as earmarks. There has been basically a 10-year hiatus since Congress had decided to bring these back. Last year, Congress decided it was time to reinstate the earmarks, but they've done it in a limited way. So it's really only public agencies that are allowed to submit requests, and there's a fair amount of transparency that goes in there, formal applications, et cetera. We expect that Congress will be pursuing them again in fiscal year '23, which is the upcoming federal fiscal year in front of us that will kick off formally in probably mid-March with the release of the President's budget. We have a number of draft earmark requests for the Board's consideration and review and direction for the upcoming appropriations process. As a note, I'd like to say that we're just going to be focusing on the Senate side for the earmarks, as Congressman McQuintock is not a supporter of earmarks, as you know. However, we will be briefing his staff, as he has shown an interest and actively engaged with the federal agencies directly. So we will be briefing him as well on whatever we determine, the Board determines shall be our earmarks. Before we get into the details of the draft request, I'd like to talk a little bit about the realities of the competitiveness of the process. I did an analysis on Senator Feinstein and Senator Padilla's request for fiscal year '22 for the DOT area and for the HUD area, the two areas that we're looking at. In terms of requests, Senator Padilla submitted a total of 158 requests last year for consideration. Senator Feinstein submitted a total of 53 requests of these total combined in the transportation arena. In the bill to date, we see between the two senators, one airport request for $450,000, one highway request for $450,000, excuse me, the airport request was $1 million for planning, the highway request was $450,000, and 10 transit requests ranging from $522,000 up to $10 million. In the HUD arena, we saw a total of eight economic development requests between our two senators, ranging between $250,000 and $2 million. So the bottom line here is that in fiscal year '22, there were really very few of our senators' requests made it into the legislation. So my advice is that we need to be modest and realistic with our requests, so that they would be fully considered for inclusion in the bill. So looking forward to the request here. Based on the discussions with county staff and Krista, and review of what's been in the bills, and our understanding of the priorities of the county, we came up with three draft conceptual requests for your review and consideration and direction. Again, concept ideas here, they will, once the Board agrees to the ideas, will move forward and spell those out in detail for the Senate applications that we'll be submitting. So without further ado, the first request is the funding for State Route 4 wagon trail. Now, I'm going to update what we sent to the Board, because I got a late-breaking email Friday evening that 4.5 million in planning that we were looking to pursue in the appropriations process for the eastern segment is going to be sought through the California Transportation Commission. So there's really no need to duplicate that request. The next tranche of funding that would be needed, however, would be for right-of-way for the project, and the total, as I understand it, is $7 million for that, which I think is too high a request in any one year. So the idea would be to seek 3.5 million for right-of-way through the federal appropriations process for fiscal year '23, and then also seek the remaining 3.5 through some state funds. I think some are being considered now, such as the trade corridor enhancement program. So we need to get the right-of-way funding before we know when we can get to construction. So I think it's really probably premature or impractical to seek construction funds right now till we get the right-of-way set. 3.5 million is a little bit high, but my view is we need to focus on the need for this evacuation route, which is really very deficient and unsafe. There were a number of evacuation routes that were included in the legislation, so I think we can build a good case based on that. The second request, I thought I'd run through the three, and then we could discuss all of them, if that's okay. The second request is for 1.5 million. This is now over in the HUD arena for economic development initiative funds, and that would be for a project that we're calling Safe Outdoors and Access to Healthy Foods. The concept here is a request for multi-benefit green infrastructure, park development, recreation for Calaveras County youth, and others, perhaps a skateboard, hiking trails, along with a community kitchen for classes, for community benefit to increase access to healthy foods. The idea is kind of to provide a recreation outlet with trails and paths for folks to enjoy a healthier lifestyle, and couple that with a community kitchen where youth can take healthy food cooking classes, perhaps have seniors help with those classes, teaching the younger generations, and really to focus on a healthy food and lifestyle, along with perhaps a community garden, if that would fit the setting. This came out of discussions that I had with Krista and with Supervisor Follendorf. The third request is again in the HUD arena for economic development initiative funds. This one is called the Calaveras County Community Resource and Resiliency Center. And what this does here is really to look at the concept of a development of a center to provide citizens navigation assistance and connect them with a wide array of services that county health and human services provide now, and to let the community engage and connect with them and understand what's available to them. And that would be in a wide range of areas, from housing, to food, to childcare, employment, mental health, COVID testing, this sort of thing. So the idea would be that the funding could be for the location of the housing navigation center, and perhaps a disaster response area, as well as staffing. Another approach the Board may want to consider is simply to couple Request Two and Three, and rather than a freestanding center, perhaps for the navigation services, perhaps those services could be provided at a satellite location. So those are the three concepts we've come up with. I want to present those, wanted to present those for your review and consideration and discussion and direction. The timeframe, as I mentioned earlier, the President's budget will be coming out mid to late March, and once that kicks off and is released, then the appropriations process starts shortly thereafter. So our request is to see if we can gather consensus around the concepts that we'd like to seek, so that we can do that in a timely way, and start briefing our congressional staffs on that, and then prepare to fill out the detailed applications. Our hope is that we'll be able to come to consensus very soon, so that we can start up the education process later this month, and I think the applications will probably be coming out in March or the beginning of April. So we've got a fair amount of work to do. And with that, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Supervisor Graham, do you?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Hello, Mia. It's good to see you again. Hope everything's.
Good to see you, too.
Back east.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you always for your work. On item three, I have a series of questions, but item number three, what was the total of that request for the Resiliency Center?
What was the what? I'm sorry.
What was the total? For item three?
For that, sorry, meant to mention that. 2.5 million was the, was the request for that one?
Okay. You know, I'm sorry, it's gonna, this is gonna be a heavy lift. I mean, we have a, we have a Congress member who's openly hostile to this type of act, and so why are U.S. senators would work with us? I hope they'll do it despite that, but I, you know, it is what it is, and the congressman's been consistent for his whole career, so none of this is a change, but we'll figure out how to work with it. My question is, when we, with item number two and number three, why are we not?
And review and direction for the upcoming appropriations process. As a note, I'd like to say that we're just going to be focusing on the Senate side for the earmarks as Congressman McClintock is not a supporter of earmarks, as you know. However, we will be briefing his staff as he has shown an interest and actively engaged with the federal agencies directly. So we will be briefing him as well on whatever we determine, the board determined shall be our earmarks. Before we get into the details of the draft request, I'd like to talk a little bit about the realities of the competitiveness of the process. I did an analysis on Senator Feinstein and Senator Padilla's request for fiscal year 22 for the DOT area and for the HUD area, the two areas that we're looking at. In terms of requests, Senator Padilla submitted a total of 158 requests last year for consideration. Senator Feinstein submitted a total of 53 requests of these total combined in the transportation arena. In the bill to date, we see between the two senators, one airport request for $450,000, one highway request for $450,000, excuse me, the airport request was $1 million for planning, the highway request was $450,000, and 10 transit requests ranging from $522,000 up to $10 million. In the HUD arena, we saw a total of eight economic development requests between our two senators ranging between $250,000 and $2 million. So the bottom line here is that in fiscal year 22, there were really very few of our senators' requests made it into the legislation. So my advice is that we need to be modest and realistic with our requests so that they would be fully considered for inclusion in the bill. So looking forward to the requests here, based on the discussions with county staff and Krista and review of what's been in the bills and our understanding of the priorities of the county, we came up with three draft conceptual requests for your review and consideration and direction. Again, concept ideas here, they will, once the board agrees to the ideas, will move forward and spell those out in detail for the Senate applications that we'll be submitting. So without further ado, the first request is the funding for State Route 4 Wagon Trail. Now, I'm going to update what we sent to the board because I got a late-breaking email Friday evening that 4.5 million in planning that we were looking to pursue in the appropriations process for the eastern segment is going to be sought through the California Transportation Commission. So there's really no need to duplicate that request. The next tranche of funding that would be needed, however, would be for right-of-way for the project. And the total, as I understand it, is $7 million for that, which I think is too high a request in any one year. So the idea would be to seek 3.5 million for right-of-way through the federal appropriations process for fiscal year 23. And then also seek the remaining 3.5 through some state funds. I think some are being considered now, such as the trade corridor enhancement program. So we need to get the right-of-way funding before we know when we can get to construction. So I think it's really probably premature or impractical to seek construction funds right now till we get the right-of-way set. 3.5 million is a little bit high, but my view is we need to focus on the need for this evacuation route, which is really very deficient and unsafe. There were a number of evacuation routes that were included in the legislation. So I think we can build a good case based on that. The second request, I thought I'd run through the three and then we could discuss all of them if that's okay. The second request is for 1.5 million. This is now over in the HUD arena for economic development initiative funds, and that would be for a project that we're calling Safe Outdoors and Access to Healthy Foods. The concept here is a request for a multi-benefit green infrastructure, park development, recreation for Calaveras County youth and others, perhaps a skateboard, hiking trails, along with a community kitchen for classes, for community benefit to increase access to healthy foods. The idea is kind of to provide a recreation outlet with trails and paths for folks to enjoy a healthier lifestyle and couple that with a community kitchen where youths can take healthy food, cooking classes, perhaps have seniors help with those classes, teaching the younger generations, and really to focus on a healthy food and lifestyle, along with perhaps a community garden if that would fit the setting. This came out of discussions that I had with Krista and with Supervisor Follendorf. The third request is again in the HUD arena for economic development initiative funds. This one is called the Calaveras County Community Resource and Resiliency Center. And what this does here is really to look at the concept of a development of a center to provide citizens navigation assistance and connect them with a wide array of services that county health and human services provide now and to let the community engage and connect with them and understand what's available to them. And that would be in a wide range of areas from housing to food to childcare, employment, mental health, COVID testing, this sort of thing. So the idea would be that the funding could be for the location of the housing navigation center and perhaps a disaster response area as well as staffing. Another approach the board may want to consider is simply to couple Request 2 and 3 and rather than a freestanding center, perhaps for the navigation services, perhaps those services could be provided at a satellite location. So those are the three concepts we've come up with. I want to present those, wanted to present those for your review and consideration and discussion and direction. The timeframe, as I mentioned earlier, the president's budget will be coming out mid to late March. And once that kicks off and is released, then the appropriations process starts shortly thereafter. So our request is to see if we can gather consensus around the concepts that we'd like to seek so that we can do that in a timely way and start briefing our congressional staffs on that and then prepare to fill out the detailed applications. Our hope is that we'll be able to come to consensus very soon so that we can start up the education process later this month. And I think the applications will probably be coming out in March or the beginning of April. So we've got a fair amount of work to do. And with that, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Supervisor Graham-Indy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Hello, Mia, it's good to see you again. Hope everything's
Good to see you, too.
Back east.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you always for your work. On item 3, I have a series of questions, but item number 3, what was the total of that request for the resiliency center?
What was the what? I'm sorry.
What was the total? For item 3?
For that, sorry, meant to mention that, 2.5 million was the request for that one?
Okay. You know, I'm sorry, it's going to, this is going to be a heavy lift. I mean, we have a congressman who is openly hostile to this type of act. And so why are U.S. senators would work with us? I hope they'll do it despite that, but I, you know, it is what it is. And the congressman's been consistent for his whole career, so none of this is a change. But we'll figure out how to work with it. My question is, when we, with item number 2 and number 3, why are we not, this board has discussed building a new Health and Human Services campus, a building, we talked about it before, why are we not adding this resiliency center and this HUD? All of these places, things would fall under Health and Human Services, and we're asking for capital dollars. Why would we not ask for that, for building something permanent as part of our overall strategy? I guess that's probably a question for the C A O as well.
Yeah, conceptually, as we move forward, if that is something that we could use these funds
Sorry, can't hear.
We'd be looking at that. But at this point, we have other sources that we're also looking for that as well. We'll be having that discussion with you and Jay.
So we're not, so why are we not including these items in that overall thought? I mean, this is a, this is a, I hope this is not a fool's errand that we're going through, but why would we not ask to have this combined under one campus? This is, I didn't understand your response.
My response is that we haven't fully developed the applications yet, but we're asking for you here, what you would like us to do is see whether we can do that in the application process, perhaps to do so.
Okay, then my suggestion would be that's what we do.
Do you have any other board? Supervisor Carroway?
Good morning, Mia.
Good morning.
On number 1 for the wagon trail, and maybe Amanda or Gary could answer it, but the one for the planning, you said it's possible it'll be paid for through the California Transportation Commission. That's a maybe?
No, it is.
Is it yes or no? It is?
Yeah, so Mia, that was confirmed Friday.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Awesome.
Okay. And what would be our chances of getting the 3.5 for right-of-way until the planning's done? Do you think that would be marketable for these earmark funds?
I do.
Okay.
Because they're all considered pre-construction activities. So, you know, I think we can explain through the application process that we are, you know, working and seeking the planning funds at the same time that we're preparing ourselves to go after these right-of-way dollars, and I think that's marketable.
Okay, thank you. On the second one, I stand to be corrected, but I thought the Calaveras Office of Education and the University of California did some of those activities already. So, and then we have agreements with some of our parks where they're already doing it. I'm just wondering how marketable that is.
I'm not, I don't have the deep background you do in the different arrangements and agreements that we have. That's fantastic, we do. I, we developed this out of understanding precedent, what had been done. We had seen another, a couple of these kind of combination issues. And so, you know, we put it forward, recreation and essentially healthy lifestyle nutrition. If you, you know, deferring to your expertise, you know, you guys are the local experts on what's going on. If this is an area that's covered for the county, then I would agree with you that, you know, it's not necessary to duplicate it. I wasn't aware of that when we put the request together.
So this would not be to supply what we existing, the programs that we have existing through U C C E. Part of that particular request has to do with other things like trails, et cetera. So we would certainly look to our existing relationships to see where we could not duplicate efforts and make sure that
I mean, the only reason I ask is these are very competitive dollars, and I would want us or through Ms. O'Connell to really be focusing where we have a really good chance to get funding. And I just look at the kinds of things that you see Congress approving back in the day when we had these things, or even now. It's pretty competitive because you're competing with people across the United States, not just within California. So I felt like that wasn't as marketable, but hearing what staff had said and what Mia said about maybe combining some of that with item 3, I think would hold us in better stead than by itself. That's all, thank you.
Do you have any other comment?
I have a question for Mia, if they can. Not to be daunting, Mia, but I do have a question about competition. With the recent redistricting and we're now with other jurisdictions that were able to put in the applications at the lower level, do you know of any of the current jurisdictions that were, that will be competing now in this district on these funds? Or were the previous congressmen in the same stance as Congressman McClintock that they did not favor these earmarks or open up the applications?
Each year is different and unique. No, I would say that there are plenty of members who are interested in seeking projects. There are some, mostly on the Republican side, who decide that they don't want to be seeking individual projects, but there are plenty who did. As you know, we will be submitting these requests on the Senate side, and so it would be for our senators to determine what they think would be the most competitive, what they feel are the most compelling cases to be made. So we're really focusing on our two senators to make the case to them.
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that with the redistricting, we're not competing with the congressional request at the state, even though we're going through the senators, because there was
Well, there will be plenty of competition. So the House will put their package together, and they will have an application process member by member. Those will be submitted. That will form the basis, that competition and what's decided will form the basis for the House appropriations bill. So that will be the House's position. Then the Senate does their own thing separately and develops their own bill so that they can come together in conference. So trust me, I agree with you. There's plenty of competition out there, but the Senate will form its own bill and our senators will determine.
Congressman's own congressional, our own congressman's stance and other jurisdictions able to get it in now that he represents them?
Yes, they do their own thing.
Okay.
And they have done their own thing and have looked at Calaveras County separately and apart from whatever the congressman is doing. So I, you know, I know it's, you know, it would be great if we could play in both the House and the Senate side in a perfect arena, we would. But the reality is, you know, really just the Senate side is open to us. So the Senate, the House bill will be what it is. Our senators are very strong. Senator Feinstein, as you know, is senior, is a subcommittee chair of the Appropriations Committee, not this one, but Energy and Water. So she has a lot of gravitas. So it will be up to her and Senator Padilla to decide what the California position and list of projects will be, and the Senate and the House will come together.
Okay. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Do you have any?
Good morning, Mia, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm doing good. Good to see your smiling face this morning.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
As spoke of before, yes, C T C did award us confirmation of 4.5 million dollars that was here. You're talking about 3.5 for the easement acquisitions, but given the numbers that you threw out earlier from last year, 2 million was the top number that was there. Would we be more competitive if we just reduce that down from 3.5 to 2 million or 3.5? Would we be more competitive? I mean, there's other avenues that we're looking at now for that easement acquisition funding, but certainly 2 million in hand would be better than trying to go after 3.5 that we may not have enough ability to get, given the numbers that you put out there earlier.
Agreed. A lesser amount is going to be more competitive. If we think there's some opportunity, you know, statewide, locally, to match that, fantastic. I would be all for going for a lesser amount in the, you know, 1.5 to 2 million dollar range, if that works, you know, locally, and hopefully we'll find some local match to couple with a 1.5 or 2 million dollar request on the federal side.
Yeah, I'm in favor of being competitive and actually having at least whatever we get, 1.5 or 2 million dollars. It certainly helped in going down that path. So that would be my comments on it, where I'd like to go and like to see it go.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor stopping? No comment?
I want to piggyback on something Gary said. What, if we went for the 3.5, is there a possibility we could, they would award us the 2 that Supervisor Tuffinelli said? Or do we, they either give you what you asked for or nothing? Or they reduce the amount?
There's variations, but I think gauging from what I'm seeing, coming in the door with a more realistic figure, you know, just gives the application a little bit more of a favorable look, you know, by the reviewer rather than saying, okay, you know, this is really high, you know, how we, you know, what's the best way to do this? So I think we'd have a better outcome at starting, because, you know, that's the beginning of the process, there'll be other steps. I think we'll probably have a better shot, given the numbers that we've seen here, at going in at a modest figure, a 1.5 to 2 million dollar figure, I think that would give us a better chance of success.
So as part of the application process, we go with Supervisor Tuffinelli's recommendation? Do we also say we will be matching, we'll come up with the rest somewhere else?
Yes, we'll talk about the matching funds that we're, you know, that we either have in hand, what we're pursuing, you know, they'll be looking to make sure that we, you know, doing our homework locally and producing locally.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I do have another question, Madam Chair. Yes, Mia, I have another question. Given the narrative that we have on this item, you're saying, at least for the highway funds, that there's a 20% match, and it could be the same for the HUD or similar for the HUD. Is there any restrictions on where that 20% comes from?
Not that I've seen, but there's a lot of different programs. What are you thinking about so I can understand your thought process here?
Well, a lot of the money that we get from COG and some of the money that comes from C T C and it comes from our R T I P funds and another thing. So if we matched the 20% with some of those funds, are there restrictions because some of that may be federal funds anyway? Or do we have to come up with general funds? Or can we get grant? I'm just looking at ways, because 20% is going to be upfront, whether they have restrictions on that or not going forward.
Yeah, typically it would be considered local money for the local match. So if it's, if we can make the case that these are local funds, that should, you know, meet the bar.
Okay. I'm just looking if we're awarded a 2 million and 20%, that's about 400 grand that we have to come up with as the match, and we're, you know, looking at different avenues and ways to meet that.
Right.
Whether we're within the boundaries that they're going to set forth. So if you could, I'd appreciate if you could send Amber, Amanda, and myself if you find out any restrictions or what qualifications are.
Yes.
You send that to us so we're on the ball moving forward.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you.
Will do, thank you.
I have a question about 2 and 3, the combination. Could you explain more what that combination would end up looking like? Or would it, because my concern is having a designated location for a resiliency center in the middle of a high fire-prone area, we've seen it happen to other jurisdictions, they end up evacuating it. So is this something that would be more benefited towards mobile versus a standalone or, as Supervisor Graham-Indy has mentioned, supporting what existing, what we already have and expanding off of it? Because I don't want to be where we're not even able to use it.
Right, right, absolutely. I'm going to call on Krista to help out here, but the idea was try to address that issue by perhaps not creating, you know, necessarily a whole new navigation center, but perhaps maybe, you know, a satellite unit or two, something like that. But I'm, you know, these are the kind of details a little bit that we're going to be getting into in the application process, and I'd actually like to get some direction from Krista and get her thoughts on what might make the most sense here, and me as well.
Right, so for example, one option would be to, to look at an area like District 1 or 5 where the threat of fire is less than it is in some of our other high fire-prone areas, to locate a resiliency center there. But another option, as Mia just indicated, would be to build on our existing outpost setup that has a little bit declined since COVID, but if you'll recall, Health and Human Services and our Sheriff's Department both have outstations, and we have other resiliency centers that we stand up in the case of a disaster like we recently did with the winter storms. So pending your board's direction, which way you would rather go, it would certainly be possible to go either direction there.
Thank you. You know, the whole resiliency standalone thing, I mean, I don't know where this whole came from or how it's connected to everything else, to be honest. I think that we could take the housing, we're talking about HUD, we're talking about resiliency, all of these things, perhaps in health and human services, we just came through a massive pandemic. I think we all value what those are, why these things are important. We've talked about trying to consolidate, and we're talking about it and hope it may be part of our strategic plan, Health and Human Services and the new building. So why would we not combine those two opportunities to help us do some of the planning and the monies that we're going to need to start this process for that, rather than come up with a vague resiliency center, which could mean just about anything, having been part of the fire issues for the last five years? So I would, I just think, you know, we ought to take number 2 and number 3 and So I would, I just think, you know, we ought to take number 2 and number 3 and rework it. That's just my opinion.
Any other supervisor you comment?
I will concur with Supervisor Garimindi.
I'll agree.
Yes.
Can I just ask a question? So I'm following along. So the idea of combining 2 and 3, are you saying and making that a part of an existing plan that you already have for housing or resiliency center? It sounded like there was something already in the works. Is that what you're talking about?
Mia, if I may. Mia, if I may, we have been talking for a while about our Health and Human Services is scattered all over the county.
Okay.
We've been talking about trying to consolidate onto a campus, onto our campus here. We're going to obviously need a new facility to do that. These grants seem like a great opportunity for us, you know. In order to do that, we're going to need a lot of planning money, programming money to get things going before we go figure out how we're actually going to finance it. So it seems like a good opportunity to leverage off the pandemic and housing and all these needs to seek a grant to plan. Now, we could talk about resiliency and we could talk about parks and HUD and all that as part of this larger conversation. But it seems like there might be an opportunity here to do something. Unfortunately, $1.5 million is not going to build a regional park, which I sincerely believe we need. But it could be the key to getting our planning documents and everything together in the next year in order to build the larger program that will house these type of programs, the larger building, I should say. So I'm just trying to pivot into having, into this coming into existing conversations rather than disparate, spread around projects.
Makes sense, makes sense. How do you, forgive me, how do you talk about this? Is it a consolidated Health and Human Services facility or campus? Or, I mean, I'm just trying to get a handle on your vision.
Well, unfortunately, the board hasn't had a chance to just come up with the final vision. So anyways, I'm talking about, you know, side conversations and things we've been working on, but we have not come up with the final. This board is not.
Okay.
If I'm wrong.
Okay.
Of course, we also haven't come up with, we also haven't come up with a, had a board discussion about items in 2 and 3 either, so. We're having that now, so.
Yeah.
I guess we are, in real time.
Okay. So in support of a larger developing vision that the board is considering to perhaps fold in some of these concepts on recreation, access to food project and the kind of navigation center for Health and Human Services, really to make those component pieces of this overall campus concept that you have that's in development?
If that's the way we have to spin things in order to achieve dollars, yeah. I mean, I'd rather, it would seem, you know, after this pandemic, it would seem like there should be good listening on the part of Washington DC to our needs, to public health infrastructure, public health at large, including all Health and Human Services pieces that go into that. I know they're different departments, but it's one ecosystem from where I'm looking at it. So it would seem like, I would hope that the federal government would want to back this up. Unfortunately, state of California is not being much help in that either. So we need infrastructure.
Yeah. Okay. I think there is a way to combine the concepts that we've laid out in 2 and 3, or at least some of them, into a larger kind of Health and Human Services campus with different component pieces, which is, I think, what you're talking about. So, you know, what we could do is try to flesh that out as best we can to describe it and to describe the county's vision or the evolving vision, it sounds like, and to, you know, propose planning to flesh out these component pieces so that we have, you know, a coordinated effort here at the county with a range of services in a, you know, cost effective and meaningful way so that they're all tied together in one, you know, kind of facility slash campus. So we could try to write that up as best we can. And I will work with Krista and Lee to try to shape that up. Krista, is that something that we need to come back to the board on? Or do we approve the concept of doing a, kind of adding to this comprehensive vision that the county is developing right now and making these component pieces? If we can get approval on that, I think that would be doable.
Well, you know, this is a bit of an editorial, but, you know, it is terribly disappointing that the infrastructure bill doesn't include a lot of money for health infrastructure, any more than California and our extra billions that are not making that investment either. So shame on both houses.
Well, we can, go ahead.
Oh, just Mia to answer your question. If the board would like us to bring this back, we certainly can do so. Board, if you feel as if you've given us clear enough marching orders, then we can move forward as discussed.
I think we'll go back.
We're just talking about items 2 and 3, bringing back. We're still going forward, first item, wagon truck. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Just a question on timeline, because they just kicked the budget down a little way so we have more time. But moving forward, what's our timeline on it? And how soon do we need to bring this back so that you can have the time to work your magic, Mia?
Right. My hope is that, I mean, we're not going to see any applications out before the president's budget comes out, which will be the middle of March roughly. So if we could get something, you know, in early March to come back, I mean, we could put something together to come back in early March to get your support and direction on, I think that would still give us enough time.
Okay.
We have a board meeting in March 8.
Okay.
Is that time enough? Would that work, Mia?
Can you give him a second? Don't look at my schedule. Yeah, I think we can put something together. Let's make sure that I'm reading you properly. That would combine concepts found in 2 and 3 and couple them within a bigger vision for Health and Human Services kind of campus idea that I'll need to get more background on. But, you know, these would be, funds would be seeking for planning of a, you know, more comprehensive Health and Human Services facility with pieces from 2 and 3 along with others. Is that right?
That's what I heard from Mr. Garimindi. I would concur. Mr. Garimindi?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, Madam Chair. I just, one point, you know, and you did bring it up, Mr. Garimindi. Look, you're working hard to fulfill a need, but, you know, it doesn't necessarily fit and the piece doesn't necessarily fit the puzzle. Which I'm feeling a little bit from Mia. I mean, she's trying to work with us and everything, but, you know, at the same time, what goes forward may not address our issue and we may be sping our wills here for no reason, you know? So at the same time, you know, I was thinking, you know, what's other ways we can work on the park end, you know? And will that be an easier piece to fit within the puzzle? So, you know, you know, coming back, we need to talk about that conversation a little deeper. Maybe, you know, Ms. O'Connell, when you come back, you'll have a little better feel of, for how the Senate and the Congress are proceeding and what pieces of the puzzle will fit in better. So maybe at the same time, we could talk about that discussion and make our final assessment based on that.
In a perfect world, that would be right. I don't know.
If you don't live in a perfect world, I...
You've given me some other thoughts to consider and to do some research on about, you know, kind of concepts that are a little bit different than what we proposed. And I can certainly see if those have gained any traction in other parts of the country. So yes, I can do that. I just want to make sure that I'm meeting your needs head on by putting together something that pulls some of the ideas. I mean, you know, off the top of my head, thinking about what I saw funding, there were, let's just say, multi-year planning efforts for more comprehensive community service, you know, type of facilities. I think we're heading in that sort of a direction. So, you know, it's got multipurpose needs to it. So, you know, I think that we'll probably be able to find some precedence for that. What I'm hearing is that you'd like to see planning funds to shape up this concept as you head towards the idea of, you know, a larger, more comprehensive campus look for the community, you know, kind of one facility where there's a number of different kind of activities going on for the community in the Health and Human Services arena. So I think, you know, we should be able to find something that might be a fit there. You know, I want to make sure I'm capturing your thoughts. We've had, you've had some good ones here, but I think I'm starting to gel on what you want. I need to do a little bit more homework and talking to people about what's been looked at, considered, so I can be part of that vision. I can have a view into your vision, even though it hasn't been fully developed. That will help me shape the product so that it meets your needs. I don't want to come back with something that just, you know, misses the mark. So I'm hoping, I'm capturing your thought, your thoughts about what you want to see. You want to see planning for kind of a multipurpose unified facility in the HHS arena, something that you've already been talking about. So hopefully that meets your needs. We'll fill in the blanks, we'll develop something, I'll look at precedents and come back to you in March.
And just to close, to agree with what Supervisor Stopper said, if this is a round peg and the square, and the hole is square, we adjust, we go to where the opportunity is.
Right.
And if the opportunity's not here, then find out where it is.
We stay fluid and shift with it.
Yeah.
But Mia's got a good reputation, we've worked with her for many years. We trust your judgment on what, we don't, nobody needs to go on fool's errands.
Correct, I understand that. I'm the biggest proponent of that. So I want to, I want to make sure that, you know, we're in sync and it's something that is getting some resonance here. And I can see that by what's been folded in over the last year. So I'll try my best to get this vision together and to see if we can find some good precedent for us, so it's not a fool's errand. And it meets your needs and it drives us forward towards that vision.
And if it is a fool's errand, we expect you to tell us, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is there any other supervisor you comment?
Thank you for putting all the work into it, Mia. These are great points, but like Supervisor Garimindi mentioned, you know, we need a game plan before we can implement a lot of these options in here. With that, I'm going to turn it over to public comment. Do we have any online comments?
Here is no online public comment.
Okay. And then she and none in the room. If there isn't any last words from supervisors or staff, we will move on to the next agenda item. I'm going to take it, Mia, you have direction.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Oh, Supervisor Hallaway.
Do we need to confirm that we're going for 2 million for item 1?
We all said yes.
Are there any issues with any supervisors on item 1? To go with the recommendation that Vice Chair? Okay. There's contenders.
Okay.
Mia, before you go, I have one question, Madam Chair. Just a little question. And I have some concerns about chasing Fox down a hole and not getting it. We were talking about going after this money competitively, searching for a plan. And to me, competitive, going and saying, we want 2 million to put together our plan or for our vision, doesn't seem to be competitive as to going in against somebody that has a project and the funds will go to this project and we're going to complete this project. So my question is, if coming back, would it be beneficial to have a discussion about spending the money, saying, okay, we have picked a spot and we know it's going to go on campus, so the money will be going after infrastructure to facilitate the project? At least we're putting something out there where we're constructing something and it will be competitive, the funds will go towards this. We'll have something constructed and then we'll move forward in the next competitive cycle to getting the funds for building the facility that we're talking about. I'm just trying to put something together that's competitive versus just saying, we want it for a plan for our vision. And to me, if the Senator is going to be looking at this, that may not be as competitive as somebody saying, this will fund, this is the final piece of our funding for our facility that we're going to put up. To me, yeah.
I got you.
Is that something that we should probably, when we come back, have a discussion about that also?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we are where we are. I don't know enough about your vision. If it's all fleshed out and ready to, you know, start the first construction, darling, fantastic. And yeah, that would be competitive. I'm sensing that we're not quite there. But I don't think that's a bar to us being competitive if we can make a compelling case that this is where we're driving towards. I mean, this is not going to be a, yeah, we want to sit around and think about all sorts of ideas. Trust me, we're not going to write it that way. It's going to be with a lot more urgency and focus. But I don't know if you're ready for construction funds. I don't know if that makes sense right now, to be honest.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good? Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mia.
My pleasure, great seeing everyone, I'll be back.
With that, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Okay, welcome back. Next on the agenda is item number 26. Clerk, can you read out?
Item 26, informational item, Integrated Waste Management. Receive a presentation by Integrated Waste Management on Rock Creek landfill, Phase 3. with GLA, our consultant, will do the second half. Just to start off with, Rock Creek, that's the entry gate there. The landfill is about... The landfill permitted site is about 200 acres, runs from Hunt Road, and that's where the gate's at, all the way down. And actually, part of Rock Creek Road runs through the lower part of it. And as we go through the presentation, I'll give you some, or anybody else watching, some visuals as far as pictures. See if it's going to work. If you look at the... As you go through the gate, you'll go down, the first thing you'll see is the gatehouse there. We have about 60,000 customers per year. We're open 361 days per year, seven days a week pretty much. We only close for four days. After the gatehouse, you'll pass by the flare. The flare is really big. As you'll see, it's set up for the whole landfill. It operates at about 18% to 20% right now because Phase 1 is capped. And then the next two pictures, the east and west side of Phase 2B. That's just to show you that we're running out of airspace. We're going up in the air above the road right now. There's about approximately two to three years left. The office and the shop building were built in the late 1990s. And then there's the transfer station. That was built in 2004. There's a transfer station with a grant from CalRecycle. Now it's called a MIRF, Material Recovery Facility, and that is where we pull out a lot of recyclables. Years ago, everything used to go into the landfill, but now we pull out everything from tires to mattresses, carpet. And of course, now you know that food waste is going to be pulled out. This is a Google shot of the landfill. There are three types of landfills. There's a trench, a mound, and a canyon. And this is a canyon landfill. As you see, in Phase 1, it starts right at the top of the canyon. As it goes down the canyon, it gets deeper and wider and the phases become bigger. The reason we're here is Phase 3. It's the biggest of the four phases. You know, if you divide it in half, there's about 25 years on the first section and then on the second section, there's about another 27 years. It's a little bit deeper. This slide right here, if you look on the right-hand side in the center, you'll see a liner. And then if you look at the bottom of the slide, you'll see that's the end liner of Phase 2B. And then Phase 3 takes off from there. It goes... If you look at the left-hand side of the photo, there's a little fire road. It goes a little bit past there, but that is all of Phase 3. It's 20 acres. In the center of that right now is the leachate pond for Phase 2. Each of the four phases gets their own leachate pond. Leachate is anything that comes into contact with waste, has to go into the leachate pond. It evaporates. Anything that doesn't touch waste can go to the side. I'll show you some pictures a little bit later of two sedimentation ponds located down canyon called a leachate pond. This is a busy slide, but I wanted to show you what Integrated Waste did in the last year. In January, we researched grants. Grants for construction of landfills are few and far between. Most grants right now are going from hazardous waste to recycling. At the state and federal level, it's pretty much all recycling. We will continue looking. On February 10th, we had our first inspection of the year with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. That's called the Water Board. We met with them and of course, it was at Red Hill and at Rock Creek Landfills. They regulate both of them. In February, we also did our environmental review for Phase 3. In March, we got conceptual cost estimates and site light memo from GLA. Sean Flores did it. He's no longer with GLA, but it's a great document as far as what he would recommend or what GLA is recommending. In May, we had a board study session with all of you. And you probably remember, we talked about IWM, RFs, and Phase 3. The next section that's bolded is Red Hill. I put that in there to show what we did all summer long. Integrated Waste staff worked really hard. I feel it was important that we take care of business at Red Hill and at Rock Creek because they're both regulated by the Water Board. Actually, in November, that report even went in early in August. And then on December 6th, we had our second inspection from the Water Board, and that was only at Rock Creek. Our normal inspector, Paul Sanders, came. He's an engineering geologist, but he also brought his supervisor, that was Howard Holt, and that was his first visit to Rock Creek. Howard, the inspection we had went good. There was only one little minor area concern. And then Howard, at the end of the meeting, once we were done with the inspection, we talked about the Phase 3 and what we needed to do. And he gave us the following directives, you know, submit plans for approval, install the desired amount. The WDRs are about five years old. Usually, every five to 10 years, you review all the documents. That would be the WDRs, the JTD, any document to landfill. So the WDRs are due to be redone and then they'll also include Phase 3. The joint technical document, as you can see, is really old, needs to be updated. It's 17 years old. It was stamped and approved in, I think, 2016, but it really wasn't redone. So let me go back. The pictures there, if you look at the upper picture in the center there, where the little sun ray comes down, you'll see a dam. That's our upper sedimentation pond, and that's right below the leachate pond. That's any surface water that runs off the site. As you can see, it's pretty much mud. It catches all the silt and sediment that goes down. It does a good job. If you look at the center photo, that's the second sedimentation pond down. The water's clear. And then from there, of course, it runs offsite on Rock Creek Road. The lower photo is just a photo of our yardway site. That was never included in any of the WDRs. The Water Board wants that to be part of the next WDRs. After our December 6th inspection, we contacted GLA, told them we needed to move forward because we're running out of airspace on Phase 2. We had a pre-kickoff Zoom meeting, which was well-attended by GLA staff, IWM, and the administration. And then on February 2nd, we had a kickoff meeting at site. Supervisor Stoppa was there. We appreciate him coming down. And we looked at various options. Anyway, that's the end of my presentation. As you can see, the slide below shows the blue area would be Phase 3A and the light brown area would be Phase 3B. Stephanie will take over if she's on.
Yep. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that, Paul. All right. I'm going to kind of go over some of, like Paul mentioned, I'm an engineer with Geologic. Can I go over the Phase 3A design and construction components to it? So next slide. So this is the overall Phase 3. Kind of like Paul mentioned, we are proposing to construct Phase 3A first and then 3B will follow. However, we're actually going to submit for... In a design report, it's what you submit to the Water Board for approval. So we'll submit for both phases. So they're both Phase 3A and 3B. Couple of features that I wanted to point out is, before we construct Phase 3A, we'll have to remove the existing leachate surface impoundment, clean, close it, and relocate it over to kind of on the screen, it's kind of on the bottom left, bottom. So it's out of the Phase 3 boundary. We'll also have to do some stormwater components to it, some concrete ditches. I'll talk about it in a minute. And I just wanted to kind of show, this is what you're looking at is the overall base of the bottom of the landfill. This is what it's going to be graded to, and this is what it would look like. And I'll kind of go on the next slide, talk about the different components, the stormwater, the sump, some liner structures in a minute. Next slide. So when we design Phase... Well, when we design any landfill, but specifically for Phase 3A and 3B, there's some different design considerations that we have to think about. Surface water is always something important that we just need to think about and design for. So similar to what's existing on site, we'll be doing some concrete panels that are up on the top of the canyon and bring water around the cell. And then we'll have that water go into a subtle, and then probably a proposed settlement basin that will then discharge the existing. And also, like Paul mentioned, we also have to worry about leachate. So leachate, again, like he mentioned, is something that, once water touches, stormwater touches waste, that's considered leachate. So we have to design for... To pump this stuff out of the bottom of the landfill. So we'll have temporary sumps, again, something that we've already... That's already existed on site. We'll have to have a gravel collection layer that then goes to the sump. Sump is then pumped, the leachate's pumped out, and the leachate's then pumped to that proposed pond that we'll have to install. Again, erosion control is very important, too. This picture actually shows existing conditions and kind of how the site handles erosion control. On native slopes where we have to do some construction, we'll put straw waddles. Again, this site has a lot of sediment movement, so we'll do... We'll plan and design our best to kind of keep that soil where it needs to be. We also have to think about stop piling. We're moving, I think it was about 200,000 cubic yards, 300,000 cubic yards of soil. So we'll have to think about and plan that that soil needs to be moved outside of Phase 3. So outside of 3A and 3B. So that way, in the next 10, 20 years, that we don't run into that stop pile. So we'll be placed out. We also have to think about soil balance, too, for a site like this. How much soil are we going to use? How much... Like, do we cover, intermediate cover for engineered fill? So these are some of the design features that we think about when we're planning a landfill expansion. Next slide. Just wanted to show, I don't know, I wish I was there and I could have brought samples. It's kind of nice to show you kind of what's at the bottom of the landfill. So we have two different, on the screens, two different systems. One is for the landfill itself and the other one is for the surface impoundment. What I'm proposing on is exactly what is out there at the landfill today in the last cell expansion. So the base liner system, again, this is bottom of the landfill. You have a liner. You also have a GCL. And then you have... And so the GCL is kind of like a clay layer. And if it... When it's hydrated, it expands and almost like toothpaste. And so it allows that there's no... It helps allow any penetration through the liner. There's also a geocomposite, which can be used as a drainage layer. This site actually has another liner system. And then on top of that is kind of, again, this rocks leachate collection system. It's usually a fabric, a geotextile, with the rock overlaid by additional fabric. And then we have our base operation, which is a soil protection layer. And again, that's at the bottom of the landfill. We also have a slightly different liner system for the pond. Again, it's part of a GCL, liner, geocomposite, and another liner. And then your pond would be placed on top of that, or place your water, your leachate would go into that. All right. Next slide. So something besides just designing everything, we also engage the Water Board early on in the design. They've already been engaged. Paul and the group has... They've been engaged just because of coming out to this site and stuff. So they know that this project is coming forward. However, we'll continue to engage them. We probably will have a 30% design meeting to kind of present the overall design, talk about the liner system, talk about any issues that we see going forward, just to make sure we get their buy-off. We do this a lot. It just kind of helps streamline the process. That way, we know if there's any hot issues that the Water Board wants to see in our report or anything that we can just kind of streamline and get their approval faster. What we're going to submit to the Water Board for this design of Phase 3A and B is going to be a design report. The design report will hold a clean closure work plan for that existing pond, and it will also show a new surface impoundment. And like I mentioned, it will show the construction drawings for 3A and 3B. It also includes specifications, any calculations supporting the designs. That all gets packaged up into what's considered a design report for the Water Board. Like Paul mentioned, there's also out there JTD. And the JTD would be prepared and submitted. It's a joint technical document. It's a huge 500-plus page document. Really wraps up and organizes everything for the site. So it goes from a leachate management plan to probably the next cell design. I mean, it just has everything packaged up in one thing, and it's called the joint technical document. And once you submit that, that actually helps the Water Board to prepare the WDRs, which is the waste discharge requirements. Those are produced by the Water Board. Next slide. Right. Since we kind of went through the design features and mentioned how we're going to engage the regulators, I'm going to talk kind of a little about the schedule for Phase 3. We're hoping to submit the design report to the Water Board in May and then possibly submitting the JTD in summer this year. The Water Board, it depends. Lately, we've been seeing Water Board just slower on, just because there's a lot of projects going on. We're just seeing the Water Boards, it takes a little bit longer for approval, which is another reason why we want to engage them sooner. And so we were thinking that, you know, if the Water Board took 90 days to review, we would get approval for the project in September, which lines up great because we can then construct next year. And so that's... So this... Yeah. So this kind of, this slide shows you kind of just the design aspect. But if you want to flip to the next one, please, talk about the construction. Okay. So again, if we get approval from the Water Board this year, it sets us up to being able to... And once you submit that, that actually helps the water board to, to prepare the WDRs, which is the waste discharge requirements, those are produced by the water board. Next slide. Right, since we kind of went through the design features and mentioned how we're going to engage the regulators, I'm going to talk kind of a little about schedule for Phase 3. We're hoping to submit the design report to the water board in May, and then possibly submitting the JTD in summer this year. The water board, it depends, lately we've been seeing water board just slower on, just because there's a lot of projects going on, we're just seeing the water boards, it takes a little bit longer for approval, which is another reason why we want to engage them sooner, and so we were thinking that, you know, if the water board took 90 days to review, we would get approval for the project in September, which lines up great because we can then construct next year. And so that's, so this, yeah, so this, so this kind of, this slide shows you kind of just the design aspect, but if you want to flip to the next one, please, talk about the construction. Okay, so again, if we get approval from the water board this year, it sets us up to being able to construct next year. So next year, we actually would be constructing the surface impoundment clean closure, and then the new surface impoundment. We'd also then can go out for Phase 3A construction at the end of the year next year, and that way line everything up for construction of Phase 3 being built in 2024. There's, there's opportunity to make 3A construction happen next year, but again, you definitely want to kind of break up the projects and break up that clean closure and get that done, because that needs to get done before the cell construction, so that's currently what we're showing, that clean closure first next year, get completed, and then you would then start your construction for yourself. Next slide. All right, cost. So costs, so we are, currently I've just started kicking off the design like Paul mentioned, we're probably about 30% into the design, we did prepare cost estimates, I know it's always a topic to discuss, and so, cost estimate for 3A, for just the landfill cell, is about 7 million, and then for the leachate clean closure, so the clean closure of existing leachate pond and the proposed new pond, it's about 1.5 million. These costs again are, at the moment are from our 30% design, things can fluctuate, we have added contingencies onto that, because again, we have not finished design, but ultimately, the biggest numbers that have to do with the cost are earthwork and then the geosynthetics, so the liners and the geotextile and the GCL, everything at the bottom of that landfill. And so, we've, again, that's why I feel pretty comfortable saying these numbers, but again, things can change, we have seen with COVID, costs have increased a little bit, but you're not seeing that too much, and also, I mean, what's it called, the inflation rate has gone up too, and again, we've, we've considered that into those numbers that I gave you, but again, things can change, again, the, the majority of the cost really has to do, is associated with the earthwork, like I mentioned, we have to move about 300,000 cubic yards of earthwork in the cell itself, we have to place engineered fill, another cost associated with the cell is kind of that gravel drainage layer, that's pretty pricey, and then also the clean closure, so again, all that earthwork is a huge component of that cost, and same thing as the geosynthetics. So, what was I going to say, I was just going to, all right. Think that was my last slide regarding, next slide.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, actually I do mean to interrupt. I'm sorry, 7 million, 1.5?
Yes.
And that's all in?
I didn't say that was all of it, but that was, the general statement was 7 million and 1.5 million, am I correct Stephanie?
Yes, yes, so it's the 7 million for the Phase 3A construction, and then 1.5 million for the clean closure slash proposed leachate impoundment.
Thank you.
Correct.
You can continue.
I think, actually, I was going to say, it was perfect timing, that's kind of all I had, and so I just wanted to open up for discussion.
Any comments from both members, Supervisor Stoppa?
I'm full of them. We're on the last minute to midnight on this project, what's, what's the timeline for, for us to be full, where we need to move forward on a clean closure?
On the design side, or?
No, I, I mean on the side where we're actually filling up our phase at the time, and having to move, having to move forward with actually putting our solid waste in another, I mean, what's our timeline?
Yeah, so to, currently we're showing that Phase 3A would be constructed in 2024, and so you could get it, it would be constructed that year, you really only need maybe a good summer construction, they'd start in May, probably would finish somewhere in October, I'm sorry, end of, or beginning of October, get that approved, so you would, you could start be filling in, in 2024, the end of 2024.
Thank you.
And that gives us some room on top of Phase 2, where we could operate in the winter time up there on rainy days, because it becomes very muddy as you go down into Phase 3 on a new cell, so just, just so you know.
There's a buffer there, there's a buffer there, so that there won't have to be diversion at that time with our trash anywhere, because, I mean, they're asking for a clean closure before we start a new building.
That would be the leachate pond.
Okay, okay.
But, but, once a phase is installed, we'll operate there on every nice day, we'll use our winter pad on, you know, during the winter, not the whole winter, but when it rains, like December.
Under, understood. So right now, the state, with the letter intent to the state that we're moving forward with something to these ends, they came back with a, we're going to have to issue a new waste discharge requirement, and then also the joint technical document. Is, is this something that, Stephanie, that you'll be providing the groundwork for as we move forward?
Um, I was going to say, I want to find out if you want me to answer that.
Yes and no, the, the, the WDRs may have to go out for RFP, we'll just, we'll have to see on that one.
Right, absolutely, they, they will have to go out to RFP, because there's an additional cost there beyond the contract. Understood, what's, what's the timeline that the state's asking for, for those to be finalized?
That, it's kind of unknown, depends on how quick that can happen.
What did the state say?
At the same time with the, as the plans are submitted to the regional or state water, we'll be developing the WDRs at that time.
All right, so did they ask for a time for reply?
No, I do have, they mainly just want to know that we're moving forward with this, we can do it concurrent, and that's what we talked about with Howard, when he was there at the site.
Okay.
Because there is, it just, the approval process, you know, there's those little bit of unknowns, but as long as we're moving forward, he's happy, I do have a letter drafted, pretty much it goes with this timeline.
We're, we're down to the last minute, like I started out with, so we don't have many choices on how we're going to move forward. We did ask for this to come back last August, didn't come back, we're presented with two pages in our, in our agenda packet today, none of this was put in there. You know, into our agenda packet when it came, came to the PowerPoint, I mean, are you looking for general direction, because it looks like you're already going down, down, down a rabbit hole when we asked you to bring it back in August of last year to get direction from the board in its entirety?
Yeah, we didn't bring it back, I think we were busy at Red Hill trying to take care of those violations, I do apologize, but we kind of had, we have to address those violations first so that we can move forward with this. We are probably six months behind, there still is time, but we would, we need to move this forward. There's, you know, we have approximately 7 million, we don't have the 8.5 million, the next step would be possible, we need to look at our fees, our fees are, the parcel fee and the green waste fee is 30 years old, and the tipping fee is 40 years old, and, and we need to possibly have a study session on our fees.
Yeah, we brought that up before, and that hasn't happened either.
With the, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Chair.
With the, with the violations that need to be mitigated, is that something that can be done within this, this year? What is holding us back with this mitigation?
There's no water board violations of Red Hill or Rock Creek right now.
But you, then, okay, then I'm.
They, they've been addressed, Ms. Fulendorf.
No, but what I, we still need to do the 1.5 million for the clean closure, which is a requirement.
But that's different than an NOV, so that's.
That's part of the construction process, but.
So within what, so do you need the 1.5 in order to meet those mandates, the requirement, to get to the 7 million, or what needs to come first, I guess is, at the end of the, get it, there's no 8.5 million dollars, but what needs to come first?
Yeah, the leachate pond would be the 1.5, and that would be in 2023, and we do have funds for that. Each phase has a separate leachate pond, there's four phases, let me go back a photo.
So then I guess I don't understand what the money problem is, I mean, if, if we have the 1.5, we can go forward, and we have seven of the 8.5, why are we worried? I mean, because you brought, you started bringing up the fees.
Well, we, it's 8.5 right now, that's the rough estimate, of course, things can go up, so it could be like 9 million, we only have 7 million, plus we also have to pay the consultant to do the design, so integrated waste needs additional funds for the construction of the actual phase we want, 3A.
So maybe just to clarify, the 1.5 can come out of the 7 million that is currently on the books?
Our, our fees are outdated and we.
All right, I'm done, Supervisor Garramendi?
So, help me understand the math, how we're paying for this, we have an 8.5 million dollar project, we have 7 million dollars in the bank to cover leachate field, everything else, how do you, and we're starting construction in under 24 months, hopefully be done, how, what, what is this source of this 1.5 million dollars that we're short? And the engineer just told us that we got 30% design, she took into account inflation and other things, I'm going to assume that 8.5 is pretty close, if it comes in at over nine, we're going to have to have some serious conversations, so tell me how, what's the makeup of this 8.5 that we've currently got, or what are, how are we going to get the other 1.5 immediately?
Well, that's, that's why we need to come back for a fee increase, because we don't have, our fees are very old, and, and they've caught up with inflation, they're decades old, they're 30 and 40 years old. I'm giving you an example, when, if, if somebody self falls to say this and the drainage transfer station, based on what they paid for a parcel fee, they'd pay about $6.12 if they go twice a month. If you lived in Tooney County and hauled at the transfer station, you're paying 30 to 40, or anywhere from 25 to 40 dollars to get rid of your trash can. Our fees are very reasonable right now, but they're too low, we're out of money, so to speak.
So if we, but, you know, it takes, obviously it took many years to save up 7 million dollars to do this, we've been saving for this for decades.
Well, they did the cap in 2012 on Phase 1, that took most of the funds, and then we haven't been saving for decades, we've only been saving for probably a decade.
Decade, so a decade.
And then there's the operational cost.
So how long will it take us if we increase fees, since we don't know what that means exactly, how much, how long would it take us, I guess I'm trying to get to, are you going to be asking for general fund dollars, loan, some sort of thing to cover this, because the fees aren't going to be ready in time, so tell me where we're coming up with the money.
It depends when they were put in place, I mean, we have.
If they happen tomorrow, and it took us 10 years to get 7 million, let's just assume that it's 700,000 dollars a year, and let's assume we've got a process to this, so, so our only answer is fees?
I, I don't know where the funds, you know, that's up to the board.
So is this a fee or is this a tax? I mean, this conversation has come up innumerable times over the last 15, 20 years, so, has that been determined?
In May, when I, when we came to the board, we asked to increase our tipping fees, we currently charge $4.00 per cubic yard for green waste, $8.00 yard for construction, demolition, anything over two yards, you do get two yards for free, we don't propose to change that, had we doubled our fees, we'd still be one of the cheapest landfills in the state as far as our fees go, but that would have brought in about 400,000 more per year.
So, I don't mean, so, so I guess my question is to the CAO, are we, do we need to budget another 1.5 million out of our general funds to cover this?
Not this year.
Next year?
If the fees don't increase, then yes, we're pretty happy to have another alternative service being launched.
So then if, if we got to wait another year to budget, is that going to hold back what's in front of us, because doing the budget, looking at alternative fees, is a whole other collaborative conversation that needs to happen, because there's a lot of other options that are out there that we need to dive into, it's not just the fee, it is the cells, and then there's fees and money, and so I think we're, it's getting convoluted a little bit here, Stoppa?
I'll, I'll start with Mr. Garramendi's point, and I'll move on to yours. The fees is too little, too late, there's no way it's going to make up that gap, so yes, to do the project's going to have to be filled in somewhere else until the fees can make that up, so whether it's one, I mean, you know, however the, however we move that money around is up to this board later, but the fees do need to be addressed, because Ms. Callaway is correct, you've been talking about it for 20 years, and I have to take responsibility, because I'm on this board now, we haven't done anything about it in 20 years. I've asked for this to be brought back multiple times since our first study session when I got on this board, because we need to address these issues. It's time it gets brought back before the board, and we start making these hard decisions, and that partially addresses what you're talking about, Ms. Fulendorf, is, yes, that money's not going to fill it in later, but we do need to give direction when it comes to the cost, which we didn't hear, how much does it cost for, for planning this through the engineers, which isn't part of that 8.5 million dollars we just discussed?
Is that the case? We're not including engineering?
No.
We're not including engineering costs in our construction costs?
No, the, the design by GCL is not included, we do have some funds for that, but not all of them.
How much do we have?
Unfortunately, the department analysts aren't here today, I believe we have approximately about 700,000, but that's a shot in the dark. It's a major construction project, and, and the system, the solid waste system in Calvares County is a very convenient one, there's seven transfer stations, not, like Tooney County really has one, you know, if you take out the little satellite one there, Amador really only has one, they charge, they do have one in Pioneer, but it's like 29 dollars a yard, it's, it's very small, but we have seven of them, we also, the household has this waste, it's not one day a month by appointment, it's 361 days per year. I could go on more, it's a great system, it, it keeps the county very clean, you know, the private board that came up with it, I admire them because it works well, but the fact that the fees haven't been touched in decades, we just need to move forward with that.
I feel like we keep using the fee, I mean, it's like any other fee, we haven't caught up to the times that we're in, and I, we need to make a decision, are we going, could. And I, we need to make a decision, are we going, could, regardless of construction cost, we don't even have a plan to even have a conversation about construction. So it, it's like we're putting, uh, it, it's, how, how can we make a decision if you don't even have a plan overall of how we're going to get to the end goal? I mean, it just, one thing in front of the other. And the other thing I didn't see in the presentation also is, what about equipment? I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, it's just one piece of the big problem overall with not just, just the entire department that we're not addressing. Money is just not the construction, it's everything else that is been delayed over the last, I don't even know how old the equipment is, probably older than I am. That needs to be, need to be addressed too. So I feel like there's different fingers to this overall plan and we keep making one to use an excuse for the other. And we need to combine them all and address it head on, like Supervisor Stoppa said. It's just, we, we need to make some decisions here and rip the Band-Aid off.
I completely concur, Ms. Fulendorf. Mostly just, they are presenting a plan right now. I think that we're going to have to bite the bullet and move forward with our engineering costs. And then as we move forward into 2023, look at our fiscal budget and make the hard decisions that we're going to have to as we move forward. But if we, if we, if we put off these ingen- So what my suggestion is, for giving you direction, my suggestion is move, move forward with the engineering and everything that needs to get done. And, and then, at the same time, we need to address the fee issues and bring that suit back sooner than later. And then, when we get, we know that is going to fix our gap when it comes to our budget in time. So then we have to address that in the coming following year. But right now, we have the money to move forward with this and move the leachate pond, which is the first step of the process. So, you know, Ms. Callaway, I'll, I'll defer to you, but this is, this is just my suggestion as one, adds general direction that we need to give Integrated Waste and to bring stuff back to us sooner than later.
Supervisor Callaway?
Again, it goes back to the $150. Is that a fee or is that a tax? If it is a tax, as the county's position has been way back when, then you need to go to a vote of the people to raise it. So the fees for tipping and yard waste are small, if I heard the conversation. So if it has been discussed in the past that maybe the 150 is a fee, not a tax, that need, question needs to be resolved, because if it is a tax, this board cannot change that. So that's where, that's where the money is, not-
It's my understanding, you know, that falls under Prop 218 and, 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 uh, that's more of a county council question, but, uh-
But that, that then is just, going back to what I said earlier, is that's just one of the many fingers of this, of the overall issue with the department. And then now we're going to have to be discussing how, what the strategy is on that. Which means, I mean, does the county really have the labor to go through the 218? You know, or do we need to come back and have this board discuss what is really the future of the department? What does it really look like? I, I mean, because if we can't even get over that 218, or raising the fee as Ms. Callaway's, I, I mean, we're going to be back to the drawing board.
That, that, that's a parcel fee. If, if we increase our tipping fees and, you know, two cubic yards for free every time you go to the transfer station or landfill, that's, that's a lot of waste, uh, that we take for free under that $150. If the tipping fee is increased, that, I, you know, I asked to double, which is still lower than most, almost all counties in California, it's very inexpensive. If we went up three times, we would have more than enough money, and that's what they charge in neighboring counties.
Supervisor Geramendi?
The Phase 3A, it's good for 25 years, right? Roughly 20 years?
Pardon me?
The Phase 2, 3A-
3A.
Is good for 25 years. We are, by my counting, and I'm assuming that engineering is about 25% of construction costs. We're going to be about just under $3 million in the hole to do this. Through environmental service, ESJPA, uh, which RCRC runs, or Cal Recycles or something, are there loan programs available that we could take on specifically for this project, set against our existing fees? Because we're putting, we're collecting roughly $700,000 a year in, in revenue for projects. So let's just say we took the next five or seven years, took that money and pledged it towards a loan, we would still have enough time to build up, um, reserves for 3B. Have we investigated loan opportunities? So rather than reaching into our wallet today, we leverage it for the future? Have we done that?
I, I have not, uh, I'm not aware of any though, for construction costs.
If I might make a suggestion, that would be a good thing. Because right now, we're only thinking about what we can afford out of our existing checkbook. So let's try to figure out, because there are programs that exist for this and different things. And, and let's figure out if we could get ourselves a nice low-interest loan, we could pay it off. We have revenue coming in already without having to, uh, overtax our residents, because, or whatever, tax or not. But it would seem like I would, before I approve this, I would like to have that run to ground.
The, the main point of this study session, I apologize, is just, we need to move forward to run it out of space. And we have the money to move forward as far as the leachate pond goes installed. And we have enough funds to, you know, pay for the wine chair of Phase 3B. But we do need to address the fee issue here, it's, uh-
I'm willing to address the fee issue if you run to ground loan options, because I'm not just going to go pick people's pocket, because it's an easy thing to do. That's all I got.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Just to a point, I believe you brought back a structural deficit when it came to the fees and operation costs. Have you?
Say that again.
Our current fees were running a structural deficit when it comes to IWN in operations. So Mr. Geramendi, if someone's running a structural deficit on, based on fees, I don't know of anybody that will guarantee a loan based on a structural deficit of current fees and operation costs. I mean, it's, it's a good idea, but, and, and my heart goes with you when it comes to extra costs to our people, but we have not moved forward on it. And how, how long, Ms. Callaway?
The tipping fee was 1982, 81, and the 1999.
Um, you know, and that's, that's the cost of doing business. So these are people, these are people that are bringing stuff in beyond the two yards. We're not talking about extra taxes. You know, it's a separate fee as opposed to the, whether it's a fee or a tax. I still would love to hear from county council on that to the other ends.
I, I, I think, Supervisor Stoppa, I hear what you're saying. I, I think you're probably absolutely correct, but I would like to still have all loan opportunities run to the ground. Because I know they exist.
We can put the land up as collateral.
Yeah.
We could give them our trash if we default?
No, we, we have options. What I don't want to do is just think of this in terms of what's in our current checkbook. Because I don't think we have to.
Yeah, the, uh, after this construction project, probably I'm estimating 10 to 12 years, you'll need another chunk of money to close cap Phase 2. Like we capped Phase 1, that's with the gas extraction system. And, uh, the cost on that, it's hard to predict 12 years from now.
One problem at a time.
But I, I, the only reason I brought it up is because I, I feel that we need more money coming into Integrated Waste. The original parcel fee was for two trash cans per week. You know, it was started in 1976 for, uh, for $28. They actually went down the following year, because they had so much money, they went down to 26. But it, ever since then, it has always gone up, until 30 years ago, it just stopped. And inflation, we've caught up with inflation in the last 30 years.
I, I look forward to hearing more data on this and seeing more numbers and running this to ground. And let's not discuss closing down transfer stations in that conversation.
No, I, I-
Because that's very sensitive in my district.
I, I'm not-
Thank you.
We, we do not make any, any cuts, but we do need to, additional revenue is what we're looking for.
I look forward to learning more.
So this is an informational item, this is, um, the direct action. Is there any other supervisor comments before I bring it to the public comment?
I'll bring up one more thing. I know I've talked far too much already, Ms., Madam Chair. I see that smile, Ms. Callaway. That's how I know I'm right, I'm talking too much. Let's, uh, discuss, back when we had our last study session, we had asked for you to bring alternatives. It seems like there may be a layer here, whether we like it or not, because stuff happens, that we may need to divert at a certain point until we can afford the bulk of 3A. We can get all the way through, 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 through the, the move of the leachate, the groundwork that goes into the stormwater diversion and everything else. But then when it comes to the liner and the actual moving of the earth, that's where we're coming up short. And we had asked for other suggestions that would come back in August. And I know I'm repeating myself, and it didn't happen. And those aren't there now. I, it's because we're, we're getting a lot of questions on, what are our options? You know, and yes, we're down to the last minute, we have to get this done, but there are options and they're not being presented to us. Whether we like the options or not.
Yeah, I would recommend against, uh, if the landfill sits dormant, then you're going to have to submit probably some-
I'm not talking about letting it go dormant, it's extending the construction period and having a diversion time during that construction period.
We can certainly have a consultant look at that and recommendations to the board.
Right.
An overall and a long-term plan to address this, with those options, as Supervisor Stoppa has mentioned. With that, I'm going to go to public comment, are there any public comments at this time?
Yes, I have Greg Sessions with the hand raised.
Okay. Oh, you there?
Good morning, Board. Greg Sessions, Assistant Auditor Controller, and previously I was the Property Tax Manager. Uh, and I just wanted to offer my research that I've done to Supervisor Callaway's question as to tax versus fee. And it is a solid waste fee that was established back in 1997. Um, and, and it always has been a fee. It feels like a tax, because it's been on the tax roll for so long at the same rate. But it is in fact a separate fee that is given to us each year by, uh, uh, the, uh, the Integrated Waste Department, with a list of APNs and the amount that we are to charge on that property tax roll. So, so it's not a, it's not an elected fee in that case. And I just wanted to point out to the board and draw their attention to, uh, the, the establishment of the fee schedule was an ordinance number 2510 and dated May 19th of 1997.
Um, just if I may, Board, um, the laws have changed since that fee was put into place and there is recent case law, solid waste, parcel fees are kind of a niche area of law. Um, and so that's something that my office is happy to get back to the board with further information on.
There's no further online public comment?
Yes. Supervisor Callaway?
I think we should direct council to look at that. I understand what Mr. Sessions said, but that, over the years, that's not what we've been told. So I think it would be a good idea to at least clarify it in relation to what existing court cases or law is.
I agree with Ms. Callaway.
I, I do as well, and we'll, we'll be doing that.
Okay. It seems to be not a head, okay. Any other public comment? Done, okay. With that, um, we will, um, go into the next agenda item, as we are already late on that one.
Can, can I bring one more item? Based on our, our last inspection with the water board, the leachate that runs out of Phase 1 and Phase 2 runs into these big sumps. And the county's under a, it's called a time scheduled order. And they've always wanted those sumps replaced and, for sampling. And Supervisor Stoppa, Supervisor Topenelli, CAO Chris LaNotta received our inspection report. They want me to respond in 30 days to them. They're willing to do away with the replacement of those sumps if we're willing, if the county is willing to move forward with Phase 3. I'm guessing, I, this, this isn't where you can just have, you know, a construction company come in and replace those. You have to submit plans, get approval, I'm guessing 100 to 200,000. If we don't move forward, they want to stick, us to stick to that schedule, they want those replaced. It's, uh, it goes back three or four years, I was not even aware of this.
So we do have things that are in timeline, violation or not, that we need to deal with?
So I, I need to, that, that, when the-
To address it, that was part of my WDR question in the timeline? Because that's part of the waste discharge requirements, is sampling through those sumps? Sorry I didn't word it that way, Paul?
But the-
Well, I get, okay, so if that's the, I mean, it's not, uh, do we need to come back with an action item to address that dollar amount? Or do we get direction? So how, how do we address this?
I, it's, I, I would, I guess, my, my question to the board is, I have a letter that I was, it's drafted. I received the report on January 26th, I have 30 days, so it's Friday that I need to send this letter out. And that's basically that we plan on moving forward with Phase 3, with the leachate pond moving in 2023, the construction of the use of, uh, Phase 3A in 2024. Otherwise, we're going to be doing something that's not even going to last two years. And it's going to cost a lot of staff's time and a lot of taxpayers' dollars. That, you don't, it doesn't need to be a board thing, I have the letter drafted, I'll just send it. It doesn't have to be approved or anything like that, it's just a normal process moving forward.
I do too, no wonder if I've been-
I haven't heard anything currently of Van Ron, um, members of the board that indicates that we're not moving forward with Phase 3 development, I'm half disappointed. Merely that we will be bringing back, um, an evaluation of the program in addition to that via a consulting firm who can present some additional, um, options and recommendations.
That's exactly what we said, or-
Paul, what does your letter say? I mean, obviously, if we.
It basically says that we'll work on updating the WDRs to include Phase 3. We'll redo the 17-year-old JTD, which needs to be redone anyway. And then in 2023, we'll move the Liche 8 pond, and in 2024, we'll install.
Basically what the pump's for, we just need to move the lake, show them we can rip the lake, and then re-clean that out, and we're going to go on to Phase 3 with that.
It's just showing a good faith effort on the part of the county to move forward, because we are running out of room. Everybody can see that.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not saying that we're not holding back Phase 3. I'm just, I'm confused by that comment. I, we need to move forward, it's just the fee part, there's a lot more fingers to this, and there's a serious budget issue that needs to be addressed, and that needs to be solved. But in the meantime, we should be going, my prediction is we should be going forward regardless. So I'm confused to where.
That's the thing, sorry, that's what I thought I said.
Okay, I heard not. Okay. Okay.
That's what I heard. One suggestion, Paul, because the money thing and construction and how stuff ends up moving forward, to say construction of 3A to start in 2024. That was kind of to my point, how are we going to piece this together? But, you know, not to be done in 2024 to start.
Right.
Yeah. Right.
Would you like Integrated Waste to come back with some ideas on fees in a month or something, or two? Or?
Can I speak? Yes, and I'm going to tell you, we did this before in 2012, and it had to do with washers and dryers and refrigerators and fees for that. It went to $25. But we need to be careful because washers and dryers and refrigerators were ended up in District 2 off of the road, and we'd be clearing those out off the road, on the side of the road all the time, because there would be piles of them. So whatever fees we need to, we need to be very careful about and learn from that experience in 2012, that we don't end up with the same type of situation here. So yes, I'm in favor of bringing back some type of action item to at least discuss fees and what those possible fees would look like. I understand what County Council is saying as far as our parcel fee. Initially, it was a parcel fee, and it was never voted on. It was a parcel fee that was when we started up the landfill. And so it may have changed, the laws have may have changed over the course of that time as to whether it's now, because it's being collected on your property tax. Barbara sends it out, is it actually a tax or not? And I'm very interested in having her find out whether it's considered a fee still, because that's what it was imposed as versus a tax. And if it still remains as a fee, we can have that discussion when you bring this back. If it's a tax, certainly it has to go back out to the public for a vote for any increase on it, so.
Yeah, in reality, we're actually in good shape. We're moving things forward, and we have two types of fees. We have a tipping fee and we have a parcel fee. So yeah, we can look at both those.
Okay.
Anyway, I'd like to thank you very much for bearing with me through that. I know it's a tough decision for the board.
Thank you, Paul. We appreciate it. And then to address Supervisor Stoppa's comment about the PowerPoint, I think that's a technical error, because I had the same issue, and I found out that because it wasn't a PDF, that's why it wasn't populating. So we have been addressing that with IT.
Got one other question then. Can you post this PowerPoint on your website so we can go there and look at it?
I apologize, I thought all he had it, and that's why I kind of rushed to it. It was pretty selfish.
Yeah, could you use your laptop? It had one document on it. So we found a technical issues on that one. Okay, thank you, Paul. We appreciate it. We give a few minutes for transition of staff to get online, and we have staff in the room as well, and we will be going to item number 28, since that was a hard timeline of 11 o'clock, and we're already a half hour behind. So we'll give a five-minute break. Yes, they're going to come in on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Good, so they got the slides. Too far to watch?
Okay, we are back. Oh. Okay, we are back, and make sure that Public Works is on. We, due to a hard timeline, we are skipping item number 27 and going to 28, and we will go back to 27 after this presentation. Okay?
Item 28, informational item, Public Works. One, receive a presentation and informational memo regarding county service areas and community service districts within Calaveras County. Two, direct Public Works staff to solicit input from CSA property owners for a period of 30 days utilizing an online survey tool. And three, direct Public Works staff to provide Board of Supervisors with findings from the surveys and recommendations at a future meeting.
Mr. Pattinger?
Yes. Good morning, Board. We're going to be presenting right now an informational item and hopefully a good discussion regarding the CSA. So right now, the first item will be to provide an overview of the state of CSAs within the county. We'll discuss how road maintenance work and capital improvement projects are programmed and completed on CSA roads. There will be an opportunity for the Board to provide direction to Public Works staff. And also, I believe in the audience is Mr. Ben Loach, who represents the CSD component of questions that you may have. At this point, I'm going to turn this over now to Kelly, Kelly Zanizer, our project manager. Jacob Lyle is also here, and he has been one of our main points of contact for CSA work.
Is it okay if we share our screen? Hear anything either? All right. Can you folks hear us? Hello?
We can hear you, but we do not see the screen yet.
I think it's going to come up in a second.
Now we see the screen, and we can hear you. Right? Everyone's not in? Yep.
All right, terrific. So as Robert said, our purpose of the presentation, and I just wanted to drop in for a second. Jacob's going to take the wheel here, but we just wanted to let you know, we're hoping that this will be an interactive presentation, and that we, you know, we want you to stop us at any point if you have any questions, and we can work through this process. So Jacob, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisors, for receiving our presentation today. My name is Jacob Lyle, and I'm an analyst with the Department of Public Works, and one of my roles with the department is to facilitate maintenance on CSA roads. As Kelly mentioned, we would like this to be an interactive process today, so feel free to interrupt us as we move through these slides. There will also be time at the end for more direction and input when we conclude. I'm going to start today by providing a high-level overview of county service areas in Calaveras County. The principal role that governs CSAs is county service area law. This law authorizes CSAs to provide a wide variety of municipal and governmental services which the county is authorized to provide. A CSA may only provide those services authorized in its formation resolution unless the Board of Supervisors adopts a resolution authorizing additional services. CSAs may be formed by application to the local agency formation commission, or LAPCO, by either the county Board of Supervisors or by a petition of registered voters. A CSA, including the entire unincorporated area of the county, may be established to provide any or all of the services authorized in Section 25210 of Government Code. Section 25210 of Government Code provides that taxes may be levied within county service areas in an amount sufficient to pay for the services provided. According to Calaveras County Municipal Code, benefit assessments or special taxes may be imposed on parcels within county service areas. Special taxes must be applied uniformly to all taxpayers or all real property within a CSA, except the unapproved property may be taxed at a lower rate than approved. When it comes to operations, county road crews provide, perform routine maintenance on CSA roads, while larger repair or construction projects are typically executed by contractors. Public Works engineering staff prepares plans, specifications, and bid documents that provide a detailed description of the work to be done. Ongoing routine road maintenance work includes all road maintenance to be completed on an as-needed basis, such as shoulder backing, roadside grading, ditching, culvert clearing, pothole patching, that kind of stuff. Overtide spraying to control roadside weeds is completed by county forces on an annual basis in conjunction with the county-wide roadside weed spray program. So we're going to talk a minute now about how Public Works facilitates communication between the county and the CSAs. Currently, there is only one CSA with a road advisory committee. The memo provided to the Board for this agenda item goes into further detail on the Board decision to dissolve the other CSA road advisory committees in 2019. The CSA 12 Road Advisory Committee meets at least once a year, but usually more, to gather information that is then provided to the Public Works Department for planning purposes. For CSAs without a road advisory committee, Public Works staff holds a notice public meeting once a year for residents to provide input on their roads. For the past two years, due to COVID restrictions, Public Works staff has used an online survey tool to gather this information. The county also communicates with CSA residents through a page on the county website called County Service Area Plan. That page can be accessed from the Department of Public Works webpage. Press releases are issued when major work is to be performed, and these notices are cross-posted on physical community bulletin boards in each CSA. When it comes to regular maintenance, minor concerns and issues like potholes, grading, localized flooding, or fallen trees are handled through the standard online service request system utilized for all other county maintained roads. Local residents may submit their requests and concerns at any time during the year, and Public Works responds in accordance with sound road maintenance policies and procedures. Residents may also track the status of their service request through the system in real time. We also communicate directly with CSA residents via email and phone, and county supervisors keep us posted on conversations and emails that they have with CSA residents. So as mentioned before, once a year between June and September, the Department of Public Works holds a notice public workshop in each of the CSAs to seek input from residents related to major road repair maintenance activities for the following construction season. Once the workshop is complete, department staff prepares an updated engineer's report for each CSA and posts a plan for public review and comment. This report includes estimated costs associated with the proposed plan. The CSA plans, complete with any public comment, are then included in the Department of Public Works Annual Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, which is presented for review and approval to the Board of Supervisors each fiscal year. For example, in the 2022 Capital Improvement Program, you will see projects that are scheduled for CSA 4. Like anything, the administration of CSA roads does not come without challenges. The first of which is substandard roads. CSA roads do not meet the minimum standards for county public roads as established in Chapter 12.02 of County Code, Road Construction and Maintenance. Also, CSA roads are public, but they're not publicly funded. CSA roads are also not private, so access of traffic can't be restricted, as it could be in an HOA. They're also, that they're not public, they can't be funded with public sources like gas tax dollars. And then there is the revenue reality. The reality is, most CSA roads were built in the late 1950s and, or late 1960s and early 1970s, and they're now over 50 years old. The benefit assessments to maintain these roads were established at the formation of the CSAs. So for CSAs 1, 2, and 4, that fee was established in 1969. For CSA 8, it was 1971, and CSA 12 was formed in 1984. Only minor adjustments have been made to the per parcel assessment in the years since. And simply put, revenues have not kept pace with inflation or increases in material and labor costs.
Okay, so as Jacob stated, we have revenue issues, and what that translates into is issues with residents' expectations versus the reality of what we can deliver. We came up with a scenario just to kind of give you folks an idea on where we stand on any given time. So our sample CSA is a CSA where all the roads are unpaved, about 7.5 miles of road. These roads are graded twice a year, once in the fall and once in the spring. The annual revenue assessment is approximately $26,000, and the cost to pave all of the roads in that CSA would be approximately $2.5 million, which would include the engineering, the administration, and actual construction of the roads. And that's in today's dollars. Unfortunately, the annual assessments, as you can see, are, meet the residents' expectations of having the roads paved. Reality, reality check, is that the CSA must save up their assessments for approximately 103 years to be able to afford to pave those 7.5 miles of road. That's our little sample there. Jacob will continue on.
So if residents desire a higher level of service or maintenance on their roads, an increase to the per parcel assessment is required. The process to increase the benefit assessment levied on owners is a four-step process, which we will cover in the next two slides. The first step is data gathering and estimates. The department prepares a report that details the scope of the improvements, the costs associated with those improvements, and outlines the proposed assessment increases per parcel. The second step is owner notification of intent to raise fees. Public Works prepares and mails a notification to each property owner that outlines the potential increase, provides the rationale behind the need for the increase and the basis of the calculations, and informs the owner of the time, date, and location of a public hearing or owner's face protest. The third and fourth steps allow the affected owners to protest the increase and/or vote to approve or deny the increase. No less than 45 days after sending the notice, the county will hold a public hearing on the increase. At the hearing, the county will receive written protests of the proposed increase. If a majority of the owners protest, it ends there, and the owners can continue to pay their existing fees. If a majority protest is not achieved, the increase is put up for a formal vote. No less than 45 days after the public hearing, the county will hold a formal mail-in ballot election for only the property owners of the affected CSA. The increase must pass by a two-thirds vote, and if passed, it will go into effect the following tax year. So with limited funds available, Public Works strives to be a good steward of CSA dollars. Any effort by the county commits CSA funds. This includes efforts to increase assessments. For example, CSA funds would be expended on Public Works staff time to develop the elements required for consideration of the assessment increase. In order to increase the assessments, the Board of Supervisors would need to direct Public Works staff to prepare an engineer's report for the CSA in question, present the engineer's report to the CSA property owners, and conduct a vote of CSA residents. At this time, Public Works requests to conduct an online survey of the CSA property owners for a period of 30 days. Based on the feedback received from each CSA during the comment period, Public Works will develop estimates for the CSAs that demonstrate strong interest in pursuing a vote to increase the parcel fees. Public Works staff will return to the Board of Supervisors with the result of the survey and make recommendations for each CSA. So that concludes the CSA informational section of our presentation. So that concludes the CSA informational section of our presentation. We welcome any feedback or questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Supervisor Calloway?
You know, a lot of times, especially, let's say, in CSA 1, you know, we have the biggest disparity there when it comes to dollars per parcel fee and the amount of residents within the area it serves. Two-thirds votes, very hard to come by, especially when it comes to raising taxes on people that are retired on fixed incomes and such. Is there a way legally that we can put to a vote that it's a higher fee once that house sells, so that all new people in the area are, as they filter in over time, they pay a higher fee? Or does it need to be a blanket equal across the board? Is that a legal way to pass a fee increase or tax increase?
We have to follow the rules established in the CSA codes. They outline specifically the only way that we can change those fees. So, your idea is, is a good idea, but unfortunately, it doesn't apply. We couldn't use that with the rules that are in place.
Would that be something like a Melrose or assessment to the future, or cost to the future rather than now, toward a specific issue, i.e. paving a road?
I believe even a Melrose would have to be voted upon by the property owners. So there's no way around that.
Well, I'm not asking that they don't do the vote, but, you know, I think the appetite for two-thirds or more of a yes would be to pass it on to the next guy. I'm not trying to get around a vote.
Is the, I'm sorry, Supervisor, stop. Is the question whether it could be different between improved parcels and unimproved parcels, or whether it would literally be something that isn't in place today but is in place in the future?
I think his question is, rather than doing the tax assessment fees currently, voting on something that later on, when the property exchanges hand, those fee increases would go up.
I am unaware of any mechanism where if a new fee were put into place, or if an existing one were raised, that that would be deferred and only go into effect when a parcel changed hands. I don't believe that is an option, but it's something that I'm happy to look at.
Thank you.
Supervisor Callaway?
The engineering costs to get it ready for a vote, is that paid for by the CSA? Does the county incur any cost in managing a CSA?
Those costs are paid by the CSA. We cannot, we cannot use the road funds for any administrative part or even working within a CSA. We cannot use the road fund.
Okay, how are we managing the CSAs that do not have a road committee or board or whatever, naturally attached to it?
The actual collection of their fees still continues to occur, and those revenues are held in deposit for each CSA. Those are the funds that are used to fund any administrative or maintenance costs.
Okay, I understand that, but the priorities of what work will be done in the non-board CSAs, how is that now managed? Does the county just make an assumption that this part needs to be gravled, or graded, or pothole filled?
Yeah, part of that is the information that we receive from the residents. The other part of it is we go up with information that we have.
I'm sorry, Mr. La, I can't hear. Could you speak up a little, please?
Yes, I was saying that part of that information is received directly from residents through the meetings and through emails and phone calls. Part of it is dictated by the information we've received through the Pavement Management Index study that was done a couple of years ago that assessed and prioritized our votes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Giamendi?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just a quick question on the Spring Hills CSA, you have property tax as an assessment. What is that vehicle, and how does that work?
Please, I'll repeat the question, please.
Under the CSA, Spring Hills CSA, you have property tax on your slide. You didn't have the fee that was assessed. So I'm curious, what is that? What is that?
Well, I can, I can say that, you know, there are two avenues for the fees in CSAs. It can be a special tax that is applied uniformly to all properties except unimproved properties, or it can be an assessment. I don't know the ins and outs of how CSA ended up as an outlier with a special tax, but we could look into that historically and find out.
If you could, that'd be great. I mean, that seems like a, as an assessed value, the properties go up, the tax would go up with it, I'm assuming. We'll have to look into that. How does one become a CSA? So let's say you're a developer, you're a homeowners association, and you want to think about being a CSA, what does that entail?
There is a process that eventually goes through the Local Agency Formation Commission to establish the CSA. It requires establishing boundaries, determining scope of work of what's going to be done within the CSA, and perhaps our friend John Benoit may be able to address that in a more detailed fashion.
But we would obviously have a say on that, because we'd be accepting that into our road system, for lack of a better term. I know it's not our road, but it's sort of in between there. Is that correct? We would have to, Public Works would have to accept it.
It was.
I'm sorry, Robert, you can't see. I think John might have some input on that.
I'm learning your system here. The CSA may be initiated by the Board of Supervisors or by a petition to LAPCO, 10% of the registered voters within the area.
Within that, what they define as their turf. So if a homeowners association wanted to do it, that would be something with the defined boundaries, go to LAPCO.
LAPCO would receive a 10% petition.
And then we would take a look at it after LAPCO? Because we're not going to accept a road project without...
Right, well, it would go through the process. Once we receive a petition of application, then we will definitely consult with the board.
Okay. And Jacob, excuse me, Mr. La, at the end of your presentation, you, there was an action item that we're sending out a, can you go through that one more time, if I understood that correctly? It's an action item you were going to mail out, or something was going to happen right away?
Actually, what we're doing with this item is we're asking the board...
Excuse me, Mr. La, can you speak louder or move the microphone?
Yeah, is this a little bit better?
Little bit.
Actually, you know what, let me just move closer to the mic. Okay, is this a little better?
Perfect.
Neat, okay. So what we're doing with this item is we understand that the cost going into sending out the letter, and doing the public hearing, and doing the election, we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing this right, and we're asking to write CSAs. So our idea was to do kind of a survey for 30 days, send something out to the members of the CSA, and kind of query their interest. Would they consider, considering increased fees for better service, what that might look, what might that look like? And then from there, we could get a better idea of which CSAs would consider an increase, and we may move forward on those ones with the vote and that process.
So are you assuming that every CSA, or do you have, maybe not assume, maybe you know, that every CSA is inadequate, or is just some? Because I certainly know, you know, CSA 12, which you put on there, they're very active as a road advisory committee, and as you well know, Mr. La, and they've seemed to have done a pretty good job on their roads. So are you saying that universally, every CSA is underfunded?
I'm not saying universally, but what I'm saying is, we at the department have gotten some feedback from members of CSAs that may be interested in a higher level of service and better roads. And so we thought we would just take this idea for all of the CSAs to the board, and have the board provide us some direction on where we might go next.
Thank you.
I don't think that it's going to be universal that all CSAs would want to entertain increases, which is why we don't necessarily want to move forward unilaterally with that, with that action.
Thank you. Well, we'll have to definitely, that goes to the Spring Hills CSA and the property tax, because to Supervisor Callaway's point on an earlier item today, increasing taxes is never easy, but I guess probably the same process. Anyway, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I have a question. So, if a CSA no longer wants to be a CSA, or they're unhappy with the county and how they navigate this system, how would they go about getting out of the CSA system, going through a CSD option, or what are other alternatives that CSAs can look into? And I see that you have a CSA slide on the screen. What are other options if this is not what the residents want to continue as? Okay, then we'll wait for John to talk about that, okay? Are there any other supervisory questions? And then we'll let John go forward? Okay, let, John, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I have an easier time to read this. LAPCOS are the Local Agency Formation Commission, sworn by the legislature in 1963, and continue to this day in all of the 58 counties. We did, there are nine CSDs in Calaveras County, of which we just did a report with eight of them, just the road CSDs. We didn't include Saddle Creek or Copper Valley, that's not in here. They're doing just fine. And all of these CSDs that we recently analyzed, they perform road services, and they're independent of county government, have their own elected boards, or appointed, you may appoint some, I'm not sure. And this, so they elect their board of directors, and they, they, yeah, they, well, can you go to the next slide here? I think that would be it. That you have, that's a, a chart of mileage and parcels, but hearing Public Works's presentation, CSDs are in just as dismal shape as CSAs are. Their budgets are all over the board, they're woefully inadequate. One of the reasons they're inadequate, and let me use my first Yuba County example, when they have a subdivision, the Board of Supervisors approves the subdivision, one of the conditions is they form a CSA. They have 70 CSAs, by the way, and it's quite a machine that they've got going there. And what they do is, when LAPCO forms a CSA, and what the board requests is that the CSA has an inflator clause, it's, the CSA is authorized by the landowner, the developer, so there's no, there's only one landowner, and that, it's going to be like $10, and then it's going to go up with the CPI. So they never run into problems like, like has happened with these CSAs that were approved after Prop 218. So, anyway, some of the common things that we found in our report with the CSAs is there's no capital improvements plan, there's no pavement management system in any of them. The major problems are, you guessed it, finances and ability to get volunteers to serve on the boards. We have two of them that don't have boards, and that one person. And, of course, revenues are inadequate, there's reluctance to approve special taxes, and they, they're just kind of a hodgepodge of various entities. And the report, I think, recommended four or five of them be dissolved. Okay, well, that gets probably to the next slide. What do you do with these CSA, CSDs? And, so, there's rate structuring opportunities, and there's districts obtain a majority of the revenue from property assessments, they don't get any Prop AVA from Prop before Prop 13. The assessments, they're, I think, Appaloosa Road did, they have two assessment areas. And, so, some, the board of directors on some small CSAs could consider the dissolution of CSDs in order and form a permanent road division. I believe Calaveras County's done a couple of those in recent years. I just hope that if the cost of these things is that there's an inflator cost, cost in the, in the assessments for those things, otherwise you're going to run into problem 20 years down the road. There's, if you dissolve a CSD, LAPCO's charged with, one of our requirements is that we have to find a successor agency. A successor agency could be the PRD, it could be a CSA, for example. Permanent road division under the Streets and Highways Code, and they've done, they've done here, and this way, it's, there's no, there's no LAPCO review of this. It's not an agency that we have to do some reviews of, like a CSA or a CSD. Others...
Who then takes on the responsibility of a PRD?
The Public Works Department of the county, but it's not an agency, you don't adjourn as the board of directors of the CSA, you just do it. Robert Patton, you're going to know a lot more about PRDs than I do, since he manages them.
What is the difference, then, between a CSA and a PRD?
It's not a government entity like, it's not an independent district that's subject to LAPCO. All it is is they, an entity that they collect money to maintain the roads. That, and it's under a different, it's under the Streets and Highways Code, not the government code. It's a little, little different.
Do they have to bring the road up? I mean, Supervisor Tuffinelli might remember, bring it up to county standard for the county, and then fund it for PRDs?
As Robert said, is that a lot of these roads are not up to county standard right now. They're public roads, but they're not up to that standard. You establish the road standards, and our Public Works will make a recommendation, and I know they change from time to time. So it really is up to you guys what you want to do, really.
Well, what she's talking about, though, is if we accept a road that we're going to maintain into our system, it has to be first brought up to our standards before we can accept it. But a PRD, those people are still paying for the road maintenance, it's just that Public Works is dealing with it and taking care of it. So it may not have to go up to our standards, because we're not incorporated and paying Public Works dollars to maintain the roads.
It's not in your maintain mileage either. And that's, that's that. So, should one of the CSAs want to, or CSDs want to convert to a CSA, there would need to be a petition or a resolution. We, we did a service review. LAPCO has the authority to initiate something like this, but it isn't going to go anywhere unless the county supports it. Also, that comes, comes a question, is, well, do you really need it? Although every one of these subdivisions were approved by the county, and I'm sure, I haven't looked at every one of them, but I'm sure there's a condition that says you got to form a road maintenance entity. In fact, probably a CSD or a CSA. got to form a road maintenance entity. In fact, probably a CSD or a CSA. And I know there's been schisms in CSAs around, CSDs around here where they were split off, some of whom would become a CSA. It's kind of been a mess. But there needs to be a comprehensive look at how these are managed. This economy's scale, if you brought in eight more CSAs into the county, you would, management of them would be probably relatively easy. However, these are underfunded, or generally underfunded. I don't want to say 100%. It's a bad legacy. What's happened with CSAs is, I have another slide, I think, if it's in order. Can you move to the next slide? Can you do that? Yeah, there we go. The CSDs, they were all formed between 1984 and 1999. Middle River was formed later. Prop 218 was passed in 1996. So you had one that was passed after Prop 218. And I guess at the first five years of Prop 218, probably nobody even read it. But, I mean, it does require to have this voter requirement. The California CSD law was revised and took effect on January 1st, 2006. That's a major change. Major changes in the CSA law, and that's just the beginning. I always have my handouts here. The special districts, CSDA came out with a law, a book on Special District Laws Reference Guide. There's a gazillion laws that have passed since 1999. And these laws make it more and more difficult to administer a CSD. In fact, we had an engineer's study done in another county about what would it cost just to manage a CSD. And their estimate was 133,000 a year. Was it, is to really do it right and comply with the laws, and that's about 10 years old or more. It just costs a tremendous amount of money to comply with all the laws. If I were to go through half of these laws and quiz the CSD members, probably most of them wouldn't know what I'm talking about. CSDA and other, and I keep, I should be like Dane Wadley. Dane Wadley is your local rap, and he's a Calaveras County boy. And anyway, there's a board member handbook that they just came out with, the CSDA. And this is really good. All the CS, it's on the LaFco website also. All the CSDs should, they should all read it. All the board members should read it. And they have an opportunity for a free membership in CSDA in their Pay What You Can program. We had training here. LaFco's had training several times. The people that show up are those from CCWD, you know, Murphy's Sanitation, these kinds of, San Andreas San, but not the road CSDs, because they're all volunteers. And a lot of them are getting older, and they've been doing it for years. And there's, there's no new volunteers, or there's very few new volunteers. It's a problem. So, anyway, the timelines here, you can see, and every year, there's a new law that is passed with respect to CSDs. I'm generalizing again, maybe there's two laws. But there's a lot of them. The website requirement's a fairly simple one. That was a couple of years ago. They all have to have a website. Well, they, most of them don't. And they don't pass a resolution. They have to pass an annual resolution if they don't want to have a website, or they have the inability to do a website. There's even a company through CSDA that'll do these websites for virtually nothing, to help these districts along. So, there's a lot of help out there. Can we move to the next slide here? Yeah, and this is where I could go into some options. Permanent road division, we talked about converting a CSA, a CSD to a CSA. I'm an advocate of, I formed once a countywide county service area. We have one county service area. In fact, Placer does this, Lake does it, and there's one other county, I, there was another county I was dealing with recently that has a countywide county service area. And they do benefit zones. The board supervisors approves the, it was Mendocino. They approve a benefit zone, and the board does, within the CSA. So you've got one CSA and a dozen or so, or how many benefits zones. And what you can do is if those are formed, of course, you form for, again, for new subdivisions and get that inflator clause in your, in your assessment of taxes. So the option is to, you can maybe form a road association. I'm concerned, again, or you guys will probably be concerned, if there were conditions of subdivisions approval, that you should be doing that. There was probably a secret review on most of these, on all of them. And so you have that issue. Another one is to dissolve the CSD and do nothing for road maintenance. Of course, I've been on some roads in Calaveras County that don't have a CSD down near Valley Springs out there. And I wouldn't recommend that. That wasn't one I would do.
Rancho.
Yeah, not Rancho, but it was, it was one that doesn't have anything. So, you know, you can ask the landowners via the Prop 218 process. This is another Yuba County example. We just did that because we were dissolving CSAs. In fact, we did a CSA report here and said to dissolve three or four, five CSAs. We did that. They've been dissolved. They're off the boat. But there, we asked, we asked the landowners there, okay, do you guys want to approve an assessment? So Public Works went out and they did a, they went through the assessment process. They denied it. And so LaFco next week, we're dissolving that district, because they're underfunded. They don't want to fund themselves. They don't want it. Done. We're out of it. So an alternative is to, of course, fund CSDs and CSAs from the County General Fund, which is not an option. I've been around, I've been around enough county folks to know that. It is an alternative. And so the, I guess a lot of, some of the questions is, the question is, is, well, do we really need to appoint a successor agency? Do we need these? But we've got some CSDs here that have 626 lots. I mean, that's a lot of lots. We've got others, they go all the way from 32 to 626 lots. So, but our report wasn't really a glowing review of CSDs in the county. And the same was with CSAs years ago. It's a, it's a real problem. And how to deal with that is, I wish I had a crystal ball and I could tell you how to do with that. And I think that's all the slides I had. It is, I don't, I don't, I think they're okay. But there's a lot of the questions here, a lot of them that you're going to have to ask legal counsel. I mean, that's the one thing, when you get down to the nuts and bolts of this. What we're going to do with these CSAs, we, LaFco can recommend we dissolve these things. But that's about as far as it's going to get. We can initiate a dissolution according to the LaFco law. But who's going to be the successor agency? What are we going to do? Do the folks support it? And if we initiate some sort of a procedure through LaFco, there's a very low threshold for protest. So at this point, until that gets changed. So we are in this dilemma that we point these things out, but we weren't given the authority to unilaterally be dictatorial in what we do. And so we have to, in this case, the best thing is to work with the people out there to see where do they want, what do they want to do? What do they want? What are these original conditions of subdivisions? What are the, what's the situation out there? Who does snow remove? I don't know. In some of these counties, when they do a CSA, they do, they do, the CSA does several functions within a subdivision up in the mountains, you know, or even they do drainage landscaping, all of these things, and the county manages it. But key is, you've got to have adequate funding. And you've got to have adequate participation. And a lot of, there's just, as I said, there's shortage of volunteers. I wish I had the solution to you. It's easy for me to say, oh, yeah, let's just get rid of it. But the folks out there may not, may not like that idea. But I think an alternative to raise a raise might be presented to some of these folks. We don't present it. It would be up to the CSD board to initiate a raise in their, and go through a Prop 218 process, not you. So in a lot of ways, we're likely to run taxes, any taxes.
Supervisor Tuffinelli has a question.
Thank you very much. John, as the, you mentioned dissolving a CSD. LaFco has authority. CSDs were created by vote of the people. Wouldn't it take a vote of the people to dissolve it?
Oh, sure. Through the protest process, yes.
Through a protest process? What, unpack that.
Yeah, and as I said, the protest process, if LaFco initiates, I only need 10% of the landowners objecting and it terminates the proceedings. And until, I know Cal LaFco, the Association of LaFcos is trying to get that raise, that 10% raise. It's very, very low right now.
When we, so we don't need, so if there's not a protest, we have authority to dissolve something that was voted in by the citizens?
Yeah, yeah. We can, we can do that with going through the protest proceedings.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm not understanding.
Yeah, there's typically, typically, there's various thresholds. You send out a protest notice, everything. Do you want to, do you object to this being dissolved?
Okay.
And if you get 25% of the landowners and/or voters pending, it will approve, we'll sign it, and it's done. But if we get 25 to 50%, it goes to a vote of all the landowners or registered voters pending. And then if it's over 50%, the LaFco proceedings are terminated. But with a LaFco-initiated project dissolution, it would be 10%. So instead of 50%, it's 10%. Or actually, 10% to go to a vote, and then it's higher from there. But it's, we're in the process of changing those percentages right now, hopefully.
And the main question then would become, I'm assuming, you know, assuming that the CSD wanted to be dissolved, what happens next? And what you're proposing is that's kind of wide open, CSAs, PRDs?
Yeah, there's all these options. What happens next? An HOA, a CSA, a PRD, any of them, really?
Because I guess my question, I mean, some of these CSDs, and four of those, nine are in my district, and some of the ones that are most challenged. So I'm just thinking, okay, so if we dissolve it, and they want to be dissolved, they've got a fixed amount of money that I assume would come with that to the county.
Well, if they dissolve it, the taxes go away.
And then how would, and then who takes over the roads?
That pass out, pass the hat around, I guess.
I live on one of those roads without a CSA, and we do pass the hat. And trust me, it's less than 10% contributing.
That doesn't work.
No, it does not. I, from personal experience, I'll tell you. And it's no fun to go walk door to door and try to collect.
Right. So that was, that would be the one advantage. If an association took it over, the taxes would go away. That's an incentive to, for everybody to get rid of the CSD. The question is, is what's going to be the result?
Right. If you become a CSA and you don't have a tax base, you're not any better.
Well, if you convert it to a CSA, I'm assuming your council would advise you on this, that the taxes would be carried over, or maybe you'd have to revote. If you had to revoke whatever you do in inflator clause, so that you have, you don't get caught up in inflation, like has happened.
Thank you.
What is the cost to dissolve through LaFco?
Through LaFco? I don't know. Our standard, I can't remember what our standard fee is. Maybe, maybe, I would say around $5,000, because we have to notify everybody, like the 626 lot, we need to, we need to do a lot of notices. And then there's the protest noticing. There's a lot of time and expense involved in just sending notices out. But it's probably around $5,000. You don't have to do any board of legalization fees. You don't have to do a lot of stuff. You have to just have the majority of the folks wanting to dissolve it, and the board or another affected agency agreeing or disagreeing. Who knows? The Public Works Department may, may decide, well, wait a minute. We don't want these types of roads in this county. And so the board would object, you know, which is the prerogative you have.
Supervisor Tuffinelli?
My question's more directed towards county council. There's some things that came up in the conversation that sort of go to my point, even though the assessed taxes go up when the property sells, because the assessed value actually goes up on the baseline. We can't do, go that way. But there's two different types of fees here that were discussed. Improved lots and unimproved, that they have separated in different areas. And so my question is this. Can you bring me back those definitions, and maybe we could have a conversation later on how those exactly apply, so that I can think about it? Because I would love to get an inflator clause in on any improved properties in Rancho Calaveras in the future, if that's what the voters would vote on. But it's a, it's a different, different way of coming at it, that, you know, they have two different fees in certain areas. So I want to continue this discussion offline, possibly come up with some ideas, especially for my CSA one. Thank you.
Are there any other board comments or questions? I have a couple, and I don't know if they go to you or to Mr. Pattinger. HOA fee, I saw that HOAs are an option on that. So would the funding shift to an HOA system, and then the HOA would deal with the 218? The county is-
They don't have a 218.
So they can just work on raising their fees?
They just get the fee approved by their, by their board of directors. I don't really know what's in the HOA law, so.
Okay.
If any, if there is any law. So.
And I'm not an expert in HOA law either. I believe it's in the Corporations Code, if I'm not mistaken. But I believe that in general, you know, John is correct, that they don't have Prop 218 concerns like governmental entities do.
There seem to be multiple CSAs and CSDs that are looking into dissolving. But some of the issues is the cost. If there was multiple CSAs and CSDs that wanted to do that, could the, did the cost have to be 5,000 a CSA or CSD, or couldn't it be one, one cost to work on all of them? I know at some point many years ago, there was kind of a, if this is what you want to do, this is get in now, or you're going to have to deal with the individual cost of going through LaFco?
Yeah, it depends. It just depends if one of them is controversial, may hold up the other one. That's, that's an issue. But generally, if you've got two different areas that want to do that, the one fee is okay. But all our fees are fee deposits. They just, it's time and materials. Is it going to take more time? If not, it'd be a negligible cost. So it depends.
And then my third question is board. It's like any board out there in this county, there's been issues with recruitment and keeping the boards full. So what are options for CSDs to, to keep going if they're having a recruitment board issue? Is that something that goes through the LaFco and you assist in helping them? Or is that something that the county assistant?
Usually what these small districts do is they provide a couple of recommendations to the board to adopt. to the board to adopt, to appoint board members. I assume these are appointed and they don't want to, they don't have the cost of elections here. So usually it comes from the board itself, or canvassing of those votes. But that's usually done by the CSA, CSD boards, not the, or definitely not LAFCO. We're the kind of, in the ivory tower type people. But when you get into the nuts and bolts of it, CSD boards that recommend people to be successors, see that fire districts all the time.
But if there is no board?
If there's no board, then I think, who's the supervisor in that district?
They become the board?
Maybe, yeah, and you, I think you could probably, you could probably find a few people. The thing is, is these CSDs are required to have a manager. Usually it's a board member that takes on the management of these districts. And it can, it can be time consuming, and so that's a problem. Most of them have a secretary, who happens to be the president of the board. So, I mean, it's, unlike Copper Valley, they have, you know, they've got a staff that does all this for them. But it's a bigger CSD and they do many more things.
One other, oh, sorry, Supervisor, go ahead.
John, when a CSA or CSD wants to become an HOA, does the money that they were paying as a CSA then transfer to the HOA? The yearly parcel fee, or however, road fee?
I've heard, I've heard a lot of county councils in years who make that determination, but a lot of times the money is reverted back to whoever paid it. It just doesn't go, or I've heard it another way, okay, it all goes into the County General Fund. I've heard it both ways, but it really is, you have to take the advice of your council. Does it go back to the proper, the property owners and taxpayers, or does it go back to, into the County General Fund? But it doesn't go to the HOA.
It does not go to the HOA. So any monies, like we looked at the CSAs, and Bar 20 has $94,000, if Bar 20 decides to become an HOA, that 94 wouldn't go to the HOA for road maintenance?
No, no, it wouldn't. I mean, we've got similar situations, like Appaloosa Road has $111,000 in reserves. Some of them have $300. So.
One more question. I don't know if it pertains to any of the other CSAs or CSDs, but I'm going to call out Bar 20. If there is other external traffic due to that being the only access to infrastructure, how does, how do these roads recuperate damages and loss when there's easement to infrastructure at the other end of the road, which increases the traffic on them?
Right.
And I know County Control has dug and dug around this, but, you know, these roads would develop with certain easements, and some have them and some don't, which increases the traffic or damages to the road more so than it would.
And their pre-existing easements, like farm equipment going through a CSD subdivision?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay. That I'd ask.
I would say they can't, but they have to annex in, and of course, why would they annex in?
And REM fees wouldn't apply to these CSDs or CSAs, am I correct? REM fees, road impact mitigation fees that are?
Well, if they were approved as subdivisions today, possibly.
Just curious.
But they're old subdivisions. These, these people, these things were approved before they even knew what a mitigation fee was. Or at least how to use it. Or mellow roots or any of that stuff. Mellow roots is around the county. That was another option.
Supervisor Calloway?
John, piggybacking on what Supervisor Follendorf said, the issues come up when you have utilities going to cell towers or whatever, and they go through these, and they're not part of the CSAs. Can the CSAs or CSDs charge them for?
I guess you could, because you're, you're granting the entitlement to the utility as part of the, and through that process.
You being, you being the CSA, the Board of Supervisors?
The Board of Supervisors, and you should, whoever processes these permits should be reaching out to these districts.
But it's a public road.
That's exactly right, Supervisor Calloway. I was about to say, that's, that's the difficulty. These are, these are public roads. They're not part of the county maintained system, obviously, but they are public, and all these different folks you're talking about do have the right to traverse them. So, yes, if we're talking about something, you know, if we're talking about somebody who actually has to obtain some sort of permit, you know, in theory, we could impose requirements on, on that permit in certain instances, but otherwise, folks have the right to drive on them.
Yeah, I kind of misinterpreted your question, like they were doing some works within the CSD roads or whatever.
And I think some of these happened before we knew what impact fees were. I mean, these were developed and contracts were made that?
We all knew what they were, as whether or not they were implemented or not.
That's a good point, yes. I'd like to give an opportunity for the public, whether they'll be online or in, to ask questions, comment, before we bring it back to the board and wrap up. Yes. So there's a, no, there's going to be a light that'll go, and that'll be your timer.
Good afternoon. My name is Sheldon Tozo, and I'm the one and only director of Copper Cove Rocky Road Service District at this time. And we are in serious need of your help, and I really appreciate your comments today. And I look forward to talking with some of you and getting some answers. Also, on your slide, the item F is what I would go for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on June?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comment by board members? John, thank you for coming today. I think you gave us a lot to think about. Mr. Pakenger and, there you go, guys. Thank you three for being here today. Do you have any comments, wrap up? You guys are kind of out of sight, out of mind up there.
Follendorf, there's a couple of things I want to say. First off, the permanent road division option is very similar in a way to the CSA option in that there still has to be engineers report, the cost of the scope of work has to be spread amongst the lots. And so it's not necessarily a cheaper option to provide maintenance, it's just a different maintenance and, okay? And then the last thing I wanted to ask was whether or not you wish us to proceed with soliciting the input from the various CSA residents for the next 30 days to see if they do have an interest in changing the scope of services and raising their, their fees or tax, depending on what it is. And that, then, once we get that information, we will come back to the board for your approval before we embark on any engineering studies and ballot and so forth. Thank you.
Board?
Just for CSAs?
Robert, would this just be for CSAs? Supervisor Gammendi, want that clarification?
Yes, that's the only, the CSAs are the only ones that we can work with in this case.
Okay. I'm seeing thumbs up and nods of yes. Is there any opposition from a board member? Okay, so I think you've got that direction, Robert. For CSAs, please go forward with the 30-day solicitation or survey.
Yes, thank you. So we will come back to you in about, once we receive the information and we compile that, it might be, I don't know, about a month and a half or so. And what, between what, two months? It will be about two months that we're scheduled to come back to you with the information, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Four months? No, I'm joking. Two months, right?
Two months, yes. We're messing with you. Yeah, two. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for participating today. I think it was really educational and informative, not just for the board, but also the public. With that, looking at the time, we are going to break for lunch. We still have one item, so we will come back for item number 27 after lunch in an hour? What does the board want?
Do you want to come in and check?
An hour?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock? Does that work? Okay, two o'clock, we'll be back here to reconvene. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome back. We have one more agenda item on the regular agenda, which is item number 27. Clerk?
Item 27, action item, economic and community development, fine exempt from CEQA, authorize and approve the one application for an acceptance of federal aviation administrative airport improvement program grants in amount of $235,534 for airfield geotechnical, topographical, and drainage studies, and $467,939 for runway rehabilitation. Two, pre-approved FFA's, FAA's proposed grant contract terms. And three, direct the county administrative officer or designate me to administer the grant, approve the advertisement for competitive bidding on pavement rehabilitation project, and sign and submit all required documents for a period ending January 31, 2023.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Galino?
Good morning. Chair Follendorf, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, your Economic and Community Development Director here today, bringing forth the airport improvements that need to be done over the next few years. We have an opportunity to apply for two grants now, and a third grant in a couple of years to actually complete the runway reconstruction project. So our runway at the airfield has not been resurfaced or reconditioned in several years. It was identified in 2013 that it needed to be reconditioned at that time, and we were not able to programmatically get the funding together to do that. So we did a patching project in 2015. The patching is starting to come apart, and we really need to go back to looking at a long-term solution for this valuable asset in our county, which is to recondition the airfield. In having meetings with FAA over the last year and our consultant, Meaden Hunt, we have come up with a strategy to address this. Just when we thought everything was perfect and we were ready to go, FAA came back in December and decided that they wanted to add a series of surveys and studies be conducted on the airfield before they let us reconstruct the airfield. Hence, we now have to go back to another patching project or a temporary rehabilitation to last us another couple of years until we can get the airfield reconditioned. So it's kind of a complicated ask. There's a lot of moving pieces in here, and I'm hoping that it was clear to you, but if not, I'm here to answer any questions, and that's why I put it on the regular agenda. So go ahead.
Any board questions or comments? Any comments from, no? Okay, with that, I will take it to public comment.
There is no online public comment.
Okay. Bring it back to you, Kathy. Is there any other?
No, thank you very, very much for listening to this. I will be back once these studies are completed, and we have all the information to do the patching. We will be opening up the bid upon your approval on the 25th to start looking at getting a contractor to do the patch work that needs to be done out there.
Okay, with that, no, I was going to say, yeah, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that, okay, with that, this is an action item, so is there a motion to move this?
So move. Oh, go ahead, Ben.
Go ahead.
So move.
You can do this.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Are there any ayes? No? Okay. The passes. Did you get that, Stacy?
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, next on the agenda is supervisory announcements, and I will start to my left with Supervisor Calloway.
Nothing to report, but we did, I told you a week ago, we're going to have a good meeting up in railroad, and we really did. I want to thank the staff that showed up and helped us put it together, and we've got good momentum and good spirits. So again, thank you to this board for giving us all that opportunity. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Yes, I have Public Works put together a public meeting tomorrow night at the Vets Hall at 5:30 concerning the Safe Route Schools project that we have going on in Dollar Springs tomorrow at 5:30.
Supervisor Spoffel.
I'll have to check my schedule, I might just go out for that.
More than welcome.
Nothing else to report, Madam Chair?
And with that, there's nothing to report, and we, at that time, we will convene into closed session. Thank you.